Mr. Free, it does look like we have all council members present and staff. So when you're ready to start the meeting, we're ready for you to start.
Very good. Let me fix my camera here. There we go. All right, everybody. Welcome to the July 7th, 2021 Los Banos City Council meeting. Remember that temporary public comment email can be sent to the city's email through the city clerk@cityclerk@losbanos.org. And a public comment will be taken during real time during email on public hearings. You can also drop off your commentary at City Hall at 520 J Street in a hard copy, or you can mail it to City Hall, the same. And excuse me, to begin our meeting here. Before our meeting officially begins, we would like to invite Noah Lawson from St. Albans Church to deliver the invocation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Let us pray. Oh Lord, our governor, whose glory is in all the world. We commend this city of Los Banos to your merciful care that being guided by your providence, we may dwell secure in your peace. Grant to the mayor and council members and to all in authority, wisdom, and strength to know and to do your will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve your people here in Los Banos in your future. We pray these things through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, and God, world without end. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We will now call the meeting to order at 4:03 PM. And we would ask Acting Police Commander Melden to deliver, delete us in the pledges pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commander. We will now go on to the roll call. And for that today, we will go to Deputy City Clerk Blevins.
Jones?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Yamas?
Here.
Harida?
Here. We have a quorum. We will now move on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. A request has been made by Councilmember Lewis to remove item 13 from the agenda for discussion consideration, which is her request regarding the Economic Development Advisory Commission. And so when we entertain the motion to approve the agenda, please state that exclusion. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert.
I think I got, I think I got Mr. Lambert in first. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. So I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Councilmember Lambert to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, Ms. Blevins?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Harida?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. I have some proclamations today for teacher retirements, particularly long-term teacher retirements. And from what I have, Ms. Span is not here either. Is that correct? So I don't have it. Oh, there she is. We did have her join us. Very well. Excellent. So I will get to, I'll read this proclamation recognizing retirement of Margaret Span. Whereas Margaret Span was born in San Diego, California, was part of a family that moved frequently from San Diego to San Jose to Seattle to Texas. And whereas Margaret Span graduated from Arlington High School in Arlington, Texas, and thereafter received her degree from Texas Wesleyan College, now university. And whereas Margaret Span's first teaching job was obtained in 1977 in Houston, Texas, with her first yearly salary being $9,500. And whereas in 1988, Margaret Span married her husband, a Baptist pastor. They began to move around again. Together they pastored and taught in Texas, New Mexico, Georgia, and California. After teaching in Tracy, California for five years, Margaret Span and her husband moved to Los Banos in 2007 and finally settled. And whereas Margaret Span began teaching algebra and geometry at Los Banos High School in 2008, when Pacheco High School opened in 2010, she jumped at the opportunity to be a part of an opening school and now proudly owns the title of an original Pacheco Panther. And whereas after teaching many math courses at Pacheco High School, Margaret Span became the financial math teacher for senior students, she finds it as an amazing way to finish her career in helping students prepare for their financial futures. And whereas aside in the opportunity of teaching thousands of kids while watching them move on into their own independent lives, Margaret Span is also passionate about church. She is particularly passionate about Westside Community Church, where her husband pastors and where she teaches children about the Bible. She also plays bass and sings on the praise team. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby recognize Margaret Span for the dedication and commitment she has given to the Los Banos Unified School District and to the community as a whole. We congratulate her on her retirement and wish her luck in her future endeavors. Congratulations. Would you like to say a word or two?
I'd just like to say that it's really been an honor to finish my teaching career here in this great town. Wonderful kids, wonderful teachers that I've worked with. And just, I just want to thank everyone for the support that you've given the teachers here in Los Banos.
Thank you so much. Now as a teacher, I echo that sentiment. Thanks for being here and we'll have the certificate here at City Hall for you. We also have a proclamation recognizing the retirement of Howard Wilson. I don't believe Mr. Wilson has responded to us. We had, couldn't reach him. I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Howard Wilson was born in Modesto, California in 1955 and grew up on a farm. And whereas Howard Wilson attended Thomas Downey High School in Modesto and joined the United States Air Force shortly after he graduated in 1973. He spent a total of six years in the military and served one tour overseas in Vietnam. He obtained the rank of Sergeant E3. And whereas after leaving the military, Howard Wilson got married and had three daughters. He now has five grandchildren. And whereas Howard Wilson attended Modesto Junior College, where he earned an associate's degree in general education, then attended CSU Stanislaw, where he majored in physical science with a second major in geology. And whereas after working some time as a field geologist specializing in bioremediation of impacted soil and groundwater, Howard Wilson obtained his teaching credential and began teaching seventh and eighth grade science at Los Banos Junior High School in 1992. And whereas in 2003, Howard Wilson was appointed as the Science Department Chair and served in that capacity for 10 years. In 2007, he also began teaching mathematics, engineering, science, achievement, Mesa, as an elective. And whereas Howard Wilson transferred to Creekside Junior High in 2016 and taught science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM, robotics, and Mesa, he also was appointed as the elective department chair. Now therefore be it proclaimed that mayor and city council members, the city council of the city of Los Banos, do hereby recognize Howard Wilson for the dedication and commitment he's given to Los Banos Unified School District to the community as a whole. We congratulate him on his retirement and wish him luck in his future endeavors. Howard, if you have a chance to see this, congratulations. You taught my daughter and did a very fine job of, she's now a science teacher herself. And now we have a proclamation recognizing the retirement of John Noyah. John Noyah, I worked with John Noyah for many years at Los Banos High School. He is implement, he has been instrumental at the state level of writing state standards for the Portuguese curriculum for State of California. Whereas John Noyah has been teaching for 40 years, 20 of those years have been at Los Banos High School. And whereas John Noyah has taught French, Portuguese, Spanish, and English as a second language, ESL classes. And whereas in addition to teaching, John Noyah has advised the French, Portuguese, and Tagalog clubs and has supervised the French and Portuguese honor societies. And whereas John Noyah describes education as a continuous process acquired through academics, work, and human interaction. And whereas John Noyah believes the best thing about teaching is that he got to work with 80% of the population and will be in charge of the future. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby recognize John Noyah for the dedication and commitment he has given to Los Banos Unified School District and to the community as a whole. We congratulate him on his retirement and wish him luck in his future endeavors. And once again, my, both my daughters had Mr. Noyah as a teacher, another outstanding teacher in Los Banos. Congratulations to all retiring. I'll probably be joining your ranks in the not-too-distant future, maybe a year or two. All right. So now we move to the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement limited to 250 words or less, by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street, or through email, cityclerk@losbanos.org, or through the US mail to 520 J Street. And comments received will be read into the record during the city council meeting. Ms. Blevins, do we have any comments in public forum today?
Um, no comments have been received, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blevins. Now I will close the public forum and move on to item seven, consideration of approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Ms. Blevins, could you please read the consent agenda for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I read the items on the consent agenda, I wanted to make a quick note that there was a very minor typo found on consent agenda item 7G. It reads July 1st, 2020, and that date should actually be July 1, 2021. So with that noted, items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 227356 to 227686 in the amount of $2,175,288.49 minutes for the June 16, 2021 city council meeting, measure P Oversight Committee report, city council resolution number 6382 authorizing the acting city manager to file a regional surface transportation program, RSTP Exchange Program Fund Claim for fiscal year 2020 to 2021, city council resolution number 6383 accepting public improvements at the intersection of V Street and Place Road, including the traffic signal applicant Los Banos Unified School District, city council resolution number 6384 approving a tentative agreement/memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banos and the Public Employees Union Local 1/AFSCME Public Works Unit, LBPW, from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, city council resolution number 6385 approving a tentative agreement/memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banos and the Los Banos Firefighters Association, LBFFA, from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, city council resolution number 6386 approving a tentative agreement between/memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banos and the Los Banos Police Sergeants Association, LBPSA, from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, city council resolution number 6387 approving a tentative agreement/memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banos and the Los Banos Police Dispatchers/Community Services Officers Association, Local 1/AFSCME Council 57, LBPDCSOA, from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, city council resolution number 6388 amending Division 4 salary schedule employee classifications relating to changes to Section D Public Works, Section E Fire, and Section F Police associated with the LBPW, LBFFA, LBPSA, and LBPDCSOA tentative agreements/memorandums of understanding, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. I'll go through the council to see if council has any items you would like to pull. Please let us know if you would like to pull it for just discussion or for a separate vote. Mr. Jones?
Uh, none, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No items here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
As Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 7E for discussion.
Item E for discussion. Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
None. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and go to the discussion first. And that'll be item E. And for that, we go to interim Public Works Director Bowersocks.
Good afternoon, Mayor Harida, Mayor Portem Lewis, and councilmembers Yamas, Jones, and Lambert. The item we have before you tonight is accepting the public improvements at the intersection of V Street and Place Road, including the traffic signal. Mayor Portem Lewis reached out to me yesterday regarding a question about the fiscal impact of the project. As the staff report reads, start of development for Grasslands Elementary School and Sunrise Ranch subdivision triggered the need for a traffic signal for their traffic impact analysis report. 512,000, approximately $512,000 were allocated from the traffic impact fees to pay for the traffic signal. The developer, which is the school district, is still tallying up the cost of the actual construction project. They will be submitting that to the city for review and this item will come back to you under a separate subject for a reimbursement for the cost of construction. So I'm, I'm open for any questions if you have anything else.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis. The question that I, I need to have clarification on and also bringing this out for public information so our public understands the process is that the request, as the acting director Bowersocks was indicating, came from the school district and Sunrise subdivision for the need. And also, you know, the city has some need as well because it is a public street. The part that I wanted to make clear to the public is that we've, we've allotted out of the traffic impact funds 512,000 for the project. So is this just for the light itself or the, the bills that the city, I'm sorry, the school district has to submit? Is that for a portion of the construction of the school or is it just for the light itself?
This would only be for the portion of the traffic signal project that, that is affected by the school, correct? So nothing related to anything on-site. It's only the work that is done in public right away.
So all, all of the costs for the impacts for that traffic signal have gone through the school district and the school district then has to submit it to the city of Los Banos? Is that correct?
Correct. For review and then we will make sure that those expenses or the receipts are related to the project.
Okay. And if all of the receipts are considered related to the project and if there is an overage of the amount that has been allocated, who would be responsible to pay for that?
So for right now, we've only allocated $512,000. So that would be the maximum amount that the city would reimburse. You know, if, if it exceeds that amount, then it will come back to council and we can make a decision or have a discussion as to how to handle the overages. But as of right now, the traffic impact fee will only cover up to that dollar amount.
Okay. So the, at this point, I guess what I'm gathering is that the city has to redetermine any overage above the 500,000. There has to be a reconsideration as to how that's going to be paid, I would assume, within the city budget. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so I think, I, I'm not quite sure how to answer that question, but right now it's only allocated up to $512,000. So any overages would require council action if that would have to be a transfer from another fund or if it would be paid through other city funds.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Uh, since that was the only discussion item, um, chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I have a motion by Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Lewis, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Mayor Protem Lewis to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Ms. Blevins, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Horia?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Bowersocks, for your explanation there, and welcome to our team. Um, move on now to item eight, the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO of Merced County. Uh, they're going to give us a presentation this evening. I think LAFCO, the general public doesn't hear a lot about them, but they're a very important organization, very important agency, uh, in the development of cities and counties. So for that, we will go to our community and economic development director, Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, we are pleased to have Mr. Bill Nicholson here. He is the executive officer of LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. He will be giving you a presentation tonight, um, about the roles and responsibilities of LAFCO and that relationship between the city and the county of, uh, Merced. So with that, I will turn it over to, uh, Mr. Nicholson. He has a PowerPoint presentation.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right. Yeah, I, um, want to thank the city manager and, and Ms. Elms, uh, for inviting me to give you this overview of the Local Agency Formation Commission of Merced County, and really the, um, role of, of LAFCOs, um, in the state, and a little bit of history about LAFCOs. Um, that's very important as you're working on your general plan update, um, because LAFCO is part of the process, um, in the end. So with that, um, I'll just point out that Stacy, you can go ahead, go, start with a little history. The, um, LAFCOs were, uh, created, they're unique to California. Other states might have similar bodies, but, but California's the only one that actually has, um, what's called LAFCO. And it was started out of the need to address the growth after World War Two, where a lot of the returning troops ended up in California, and the state was just doing building booms everywhere. And, uh, San Jose was one of the famous locations, uh, for growth, and they were, um, annexing land when there was no real, um, state involvement in the process, and just spreading out and sprawling and leading to a lot of issues. And, uh, what, what we had was a lot of cities that were near each other, fighting over, uh, who, who's, should be annexing land in between the cities. Uh, if they were in the county, there were special districts being formed all the time to provide one service or another without any real plan or any real long, um, vision for what was going to happen. And it was creating a big mess. So at, at the time, they had Governor Pat Brown, um, Jerry's, uh, father, uh, created a commission on urban problems and orderly boundaries, in the next slide. And they produced a study of meeting metropolitan problems. And this led to a recommendation to create a, a body that would, um, oversee the annexation and creation of, of districts and incorporation of cities. And that resulted in, um, the creation of LAFCO. Can I next slide? So in nineteen sixty-three, um, based, there was recommendations in the study to create a state agency, but, uh, the legislators wanting local control, they, uh, negotiated or battled with the governor and they ended up creating, um, the, the le- legislation that had implemented LAFCO was to do it on a local basis, uh, implementing state laws, but it's all local officials. And each county, all fifty-eight counties would have a LAFCO, and, uh, the LAFCOs were independent, uh, bodies, so they're not, they're not, um, subject to the county overriding them or some other local agency. They're, they're really an independent body, uh, made up of local people though, um, implementing state law. Okay, next slide. So the, um, over the years since they first formed LAFCO, it's, it's, the, the law governing LAFCO has changed many times, sometimes affecting cities, sometimes only affecting special districts. Uh, but the most, one of the most significant changes happened in year two thousand with the passage of the Cortez-Zinox-Hurstburg Local Government Organization Act of two thousand. And that law is basically what's in place today. And, uh, even though it gets modified almost every year in some fashion, that's the, the basic tenet. Everything was reformatting, and a lot of new provisions were added. Um, one thing that it did do was many LAFCOs, including Merced, were, um, the, like a function of a county department, and in Merced's case, it was the planning department, and LAFCO was kind of a side activity. And actually, I started with LAFCO in Merced County in nineteen eighty-three, way, way back. And LAFCO was always a function of, of the planning duties, maybe taking ten percent of the time or, or less, uh, or sometimes more. And, uh, we were still attributable to the commission, but we were funded a hundred percent by the county, um, until two thousand, and then it required that all the entities who participated in LAFCO, uh, would fund LAFCO, and that helps add more, uh, independence. Can I next slide? Um, the, uh, purposes then of LAFCO that are handed down by the state are to encourage orderly boundaries and to discourage or missfall. Again, that was one of the trends going on after World, World War Two, which has actually continued in spite of LAFCO's creation. Uh, also to conserve agricultural land and open space resources, promote efficient delivery of public services. And again, that can be a city, or it can be, um, special districts, or even county service areas. Uh, also, to consider, there's a whole lot of issues that keep getting added almost every year. Like, right now, fire, uh, wildland fire suppression is another factor that LAFCO has to look at when they're looking at annexations. But the basic tenants have always been regional housing needs, um, adequate water supply, and of course, with that is sewer wastewater treatment. Um, they've added, looking at disadvantaged communities, which would typically be, um, they call them DAX in the LAFCO law, and they're unincorporated communities on the fringe of cities. And, uh, there was a, a pattern of cities annexing the, the open land or the farmland and leaving the partially developed county areas behind. And over time, then you have these big pockets of, um, poor communities that have, um, they're on county services, not city services. So that, there's some laws about that. And, um, other issues, um, including the environmental review process. Okay, next slide. So in, uh, Merced LAFCO were made up of all local people, again, with two county supervisors and, uh, two city council members. And since we have six cities, the cities have come up with a very equitable arrangement with the San Joaquin River as the dividing line, that there's three cities on each side. And so at any one time, there'll be a representative from a city on the east side and the west side. And then, uh, there's a public member, and that public member's appointed by the other four commissioners. And they can't be a ci- a city or a county person or elected official, and they can't even be from a special district. They have to be really independent of, of being a government person. Um, and each category has an alternate that doesn't get to vote unless one of the regular members isn't present. Um, however, in our case, um, the alternates can participate in discussions and give their input. They ju- they just can't vote if the regular members are there. Um, this is a unique feature that's, again, always a challenge, that the, the commission is implementing state law. So the statute says, when, when you get on the commission, you're to remove your city or county hat and act as a commissioner, implementing the LAFCO law. So if you, if you come from Los Banos and you're on the, on LAFCO, uh, and the city's proposing an annexation, you shouldn't be voting on that annexation like you did at city council. You should be looking at it differently from a LAFCO perspective and seeing, is it orderly development? Is it, is it, um, efficient delivery of services? Does it affect ag land and all that? And so it's very hard to do, but it's, that's one of the charges, and same for the county members. Um, and again, it's, it's, we're implementing state law. So, um, that's where the legal challenges for LAFCO come in, that if somebody didn't like what LAFCO does, and we can get challenged, they're going to look at how did we comply with state law, not, um, not implementing the county's general plan or the city's general plan directly. Okay, next slide. Um, again, as LAFCOs are independent, and it's, the second bullet here is, I, as the executive officer, I'm, I'm retired from the counties. I, I do, uh, under contract, I do LAFCO, uh, consulting. And actually, I do it from Merced County and San Benito County. But I, my boss is the commission. The, the five sitting commissioners are, are who I answer to. I don't answer to a county executive officer or a city manager. Um, so it is, it is operated very independently. And again, the funding comes from, um, the county and the, each of the six cities. And if, many LAFCOs have special districts on them, so there's seven members. Uh, we only have five, but in those cases, special districts actually pay part of the bill for LAFCO operations. And, um, again, we're based on the problems of the state. LAFCOs were created as a local watchdog. And so one of the activities that was mandated back in two thousand was to do municipal, municipal service reviews, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And that's for every entity that we have jurisdiction over, cities and special districts and county service areas. We do a report on their functions and their budgets and their activities. And if they have land use authority, their general plans, their maps. And, uh, we post that on our website, and that's, again, the, it's for public information. Um, and transparency is, is one of the goals that, that LAFCO has. Okay, next slide. So in, on a more day-to-day basis, um, our role is to regulate boundaries of existing public agencies, which is, again, typically through annexations. Sometimes we remove land from boundaries, more, more like with ag irrigation districts. Um, and also creating new agencies. And if it's a district, it's a formation, and if it's a city, it's called incorporation. And those are rare, but under Sigma, recently, we've had a couple of water districts formed, um, so that they have a better say in the water jurisdictional issues and groundwater basin than if they were just a bunch of landowners. So it doesn't happen too often, but it, it does happen. Um, we also review extensions of public services, um, outside boundaries of the agency, um, w- rather than being annexed. And, um, in Los Banos' case, you've had a few cases of that where, um, the property needed public services, but they weren't close enough to be annexed. Um, Ronny's Landscaping with, uh, inadequate or failing water system with contaminated water was one connection that LAFCO approved. And the, um, migrant labor camp up, uh, one sixty-five and, um, Henry Miller was another, um, e- extension that LAFCO approved for, in those cases, for health and safety issues. Um, we can only approve a boundary change if it's consistent with the sphere of influence of the agency. And, um, I'll talk about spheres of influence in a little bit, but that, that is a major reference, uh, boundary in a general plan update process. So, um, you've, I know you've talked about the term already and you have seen maps, um, but I'll, I'll just describe what a, what a sphere is. And, um, this reference that LAFCOs are the entity responsible to adopt a sphere of influence. So a city or a county or a special district could propose a sphere around some community or for your city limits. But, um, only LAFCO can approve it. So otherwise, it's, it's a proposed boundary, and then it has to come to LAFCO, and LAFCO has criteria to review, which I'll, uh, talk about shortly. Um, finally, one, one restriction or prohibition that they put on LAFCO uh, at the state was that we can look at service efficiencies, the timing of development, the, um, impacts on open space, um, logical boundaries. Um, but we can't, um, dictate land use. So if you had a, a large lot, upscale, single pa- family housing project coming into the city on twenty acres, LAFCO couldn't say, well, we'll approve it if you make it, um, three-story apartments instead. We, we want affordable housing, so you gotta, you gotta change the land use. We, we aren't, we can't, um, change the land use. We can deny or approve the land use we proposed, but we can't, we can't say, well, we'll prove it conditioned on changing the, uh, uses involved or going from commercial to residential or, or vice versa. Okay, next slide. Okay, so now onto the specifics, um, of the sphere of influence. It's, um, defined as a plan for the probable physical boundary and service area of the agency. And that, the definition was changed about three years ago, and it used to say the ultimate boundary. So when LAFCO approved it, it was really supposed to last a long time. But now it's more tied to the, um, le- level of service that a, that an agency has, whether it's a city or a special district. It's, it's what's your capacity for services and what's your plan for services? And maybe you, you don't have the capacity right now, but you have a master plan, uh, for a sewer plant. And the boundary would match that, that service area. And you have funding and you have a plan in place for how to serve the area. So that's, um, that's where you're going to grow into as a, as a agency. Um, and then you would annex, you know, LAFCO would process annex, individual annexations within that boundary. And we can only approve annexations if they are within the sphere. We can't, we can't, um, go outside the sphere. We, we need to amend the sphere. Um, another law that came into effect in two thousand was that you can't update a sphere, uh, without preparing a municipal service review. And again, the municipal service review is that document that LAFCOs are required to prepare for all, uh, public agencies that we regulate. And just, for example, special districts and cities are the main ones. Um, but excluded from that is schools. The, LAFCO has no authority over school districts. So we don't, we don't get involved in school. The schools hardly change their boundaries. But, um, we don't have any say over school district functions or operations, and we definitely don't do municipal service reviews. But we do ag- irrigation districts, resource conservation districts, cemetery districts, uh, sewer and water districts, which are like in San Antuela and, uh, Winton and Plata, uh, unincorporated communities. Um, and of course, for cities. So there's a lot of different, um, entities that are, that provide services, and they're called municipal, but sometimes they're, they're very rural. They're not, they're not related to a city or an urban area. And those, the requirements in an MSR are to look at the growth and population projections for the area, the needs and deficiencies of the services that they provide, uh, the financial ability to provide those services, status and opportunities for shared facilities, which could be, um, especially between districts or, or a city helping out a special district on the fringe, and, uh, accountability and operational efficiencies. Again, once we prepare these municipal service reviews, or MSRs is what we call them, um, we post them on our website, and that, they become a, a place for information for the public or other state agencies to look at what's, you know, what's going on within Merced County, uh, with cities and special districts. The current MSR for Los Banos was adopted in twenty twelve, um, after you adopted it, your last general plan update. And, um, and that led to, well, that was part of the process to submit a sphere of influence update, um, which, um, was not completed at the time. Your sphere is the same sphere that existed before that. But, and I'll get into that, um, in a moment, or in fact, maybe it's the next. Go ahead. So here we are, yeah. So looking at, uh, local general plan and sphere of influence boundaries, we were, we're back to, um, the, what's existing and what was proposed back in twenty twelve is, is an example for you. Um, so go ahead, Stacy. Guess, this first image is actually from the State Department of Planning and Research, which is a guide for, um, the state agency that guides the preparation of general plans and provides technical support even to LAFCOs to a degree. And this is a, a theoretical, um, explanation of kind of a planning concept of boundaries for, for cities especially, where you have the city limits all shaded. And then you have the, the sphere of influence would be the next boundary, which is a, a dotted line that's thicker. And then, um, you may have a planning area that's larger than that that has issues affecting the city, um, but they're not proposed within your sphere. It's not something that you're, you're providing cer- planning to provide services to or, or annex land into, but they have a bearing on the relationship to the city. And, um, if anything, maybe it's an area where, even though you're not planning to grow, you're worried about the county coming in and putting some use in. Um, it could be an urban use that competes with the city, or it could be, uh, heavy agricultural. Um it could be an urban use that competes with the city or it could be uh heavy agricultural use like a dairy that's upwind of town and, and you, you see your future annexation area being impacted by a big dairy or big dairy lagoon. So you wanna have input on that, but you don't plan on annexing it either. So these are the, this is a concept that's out there for all, all Lafcos and cities and counties to look at uh for um creating boundaries. And um so it's a template. So I wanna show you now what, what we were considering back in twenty twelve for Los Banos on the next slide. So in this diagram, you have the, the city limits as of twenty twelve that are shaded and it's pretty close to that still today. And then the existing sphere of influence is the black line that goes outside that boundary, which, which was adopted by Lafco. And I don't recall the year, but it would have probably been the early two thousands. And that's the area that, that under, under the current uh boundary of Lafco that you could annex into uh under your existing general plan. The proposal at the time was this red and black. It shows up this kind of red and black or red and white dash line. And that was a proposed sphere of influence submitted to Lafco back in twenty twelve. And that was based on your um general plan that you're updating right now. There's a process for um Lafco review of the sphere um and criteria, as I mentioned, that we, things we look at in a sphere. Uh but there's also a, a parallel process. It required i- in the Cortez and Ochs-Herzberg Act that says that before the city submits their sphere of influence application to Lafco for an update, they need to talk to the county. And the main issue is discussing the land uses in the area that the city wants to put in their sphere and what's gonna happen in those areas in the interim between um when this, when it's in the county and the county's got control and when the city may wanna annex it. And trying to preserve, the city's interest would be preserving it for the city um when they get out there, not, not have a county um screwed up. So there is a required negotiation. In Merced County's case, it typically leads to bringing up the issue of revenue sharing, which is another law that is, that is only applicable by law to when you're annexing land. You have to have a revenue sharing agreement with how the um property taxes specifically would be split between the city and county upon annexation. And if you don't have an agreement, Lafco isn't allowed to process an application. So uh at a sphere stage, these sphere agreements, most of the time, the, the county and the cities negotiate agreement that covers both the sphere and the future annexations and basically get, get through the negotiations and the um, all the fun and games that go on during that process. Do it one time and not, not do a sphere agreement and then come back and do an annexation agreement. Um they try to knock them out together. And I know the city has um a current agreement with the, the county um on the prior sphere. But in twenty twelve, um an agreement was not reached with the county. And after many, many meetings, um the city said, well, we're not gonna wait. We wanna go to Lafco. And the county said, go ahead. And so the city went to Lafco and the commissioner said, um why don't you go work it out? We don't really wanna approve this based on um the disagreements you're having. So go back and work it out and come back. And then the um great recession came in and there wasn't much need to annex. So um it never, it never came back to Lafco. So um, so again, your sphere is the, the black line that's closer to the current city limits and not the bigger line. And I know, I have seen some of the maps on your general plan update effort. And you, you may be proposing a new sphere, um but the sphere you're, you'd be modifying um or submitting to Lafco to modify would be the, the sphere on the black line here. It wouldn't be the, the red line and you'd be moving because that, that was never uh adopted by Lafco. So um, yeah, so that's kind of a historical perspective on that. Um go to the next slide, please. And this is um showing you this, the general plan, land uses of your tw- of your twenty thirty general plan. And um the proposed sphere line is outlined in blue on this map. And then you have a larger um planning area in red. So in relation to the map that I showed you a couple of slides ago from the state on having a city limit and then a sphere boundary and then a planning area, this map represents um this planning area that goes out, includes Volta and goes, goes south to Copa de Ora. There's another term for that planning area that's out, used, has been used historically in Merced County, called, called an area of interest. And that, again, it would be an area where you, where the city doesn't really plan to annex, doesn't plan to provide sewer capacity or um connect roads or do any major infrastructure. Um but you're, you're worried about the county. And so you, you might propose putting it in your sphere of influence so that the county doesn't do something um in the area. Or you might put it in your sphere as an ag buffer, um that's been talked about. And uh yet the, the sphere is your ultimate service area. And really, in the development community, and I've run into this many times, in developers invest in buying land based on being within the sphere because that's usually where your plan for services identifies all, all the urban services you're gonna provide. And if you put an area in your sphere that you're proposing as that ag preserve, some unsuspecting developer may just go out there and buy it, seeing where the sphere is and try to get a cheap from the farmer, not, you know, not tell the farmer a lot about the, the future, but then find out that it's really not intended for development. And they bought it for that and get in big disputes with uh your city manager and your, your council and your planning staff. So um that, that happens. So again, there's uh the um planning area or an area of interest is an alternative to putting something in your sphere that you don't implant, intend to serve. And that would be part of what we as Lafco would be scrutinizing is if you have a sphere that's got uses in it that aren't proposed to be urbanized. And it doesn't, it's not included in your plan for services for infrastructure and public services, then um it would be better to call it something different. And then during that negotiation with the county on your sphere, then you try to lock down whatever agreement you can with the county to, to um say they're gonna stay out. They'll, they'll let farmers do what they're doing, maybe let some ag. Maybe you don't care about dairies, maybe you do. But otherwise, you, you would want the county to, to leave that land um, you know, you know, open um condition as, as a, as a fringe to your ultimate city limits. And so that would be, that would be part of the negotiation process. Um and it go, and it goes back to that map from the State Department of Conservation. So with that, um next slide. Okay, so the um sphere of influence process, again, just to summarize it, is you, you would be doing your general plan update typically. And then you'd identify your sphere as part of that effort. And typically, it's your urban where you plan to go for urban development. And I know Augustine put, put a larger sphere with an ag green belt in it. And staff didn't like that, um basically because everything around the city, the side of the city is either ag or wetlands in your case. Most cities are just ag, but you have a lot of wetlands with the grassland areas to the north. But there's really no need for a buffer in staff's view from having your ag land buffer or the county's ag land. So um you, so usually that would be part of your analysis of the urbanization. And you do a SEQA, you know, an EIR on the um, on your general plan. And that would evaluate all the urban growth going on, which is usually fills up your sphere. You get your EIR completed and um the county comments on it, Lafco comments on it, the surrounding ag districts and um habitat districts and Farm Bureau and others comment on it. And then um you get your final IR and then you, you act on your general plan. And then you would um want to come to Lafco with your sphere. And then the requirement, the law is that, that at least thirty days before you were ready to submit to Lafco, you meet with the county and try to reach an agreement. And I put the, the government code section in there just um as a reference that it is a requirement and that Lafco um can't move forward until you, you've tried to reach an agreement. And you don't have to reach an agreement, but you, but you need to try to. And then um you submit your application to Lafco. And if you did reach an agreement, then the law says that the commissioner is supposed to put great weight to that agreement. So we have issues like protecting ag land and making sure you, you um aren't um sprawling out and you're adding a whole lot more land than you really need over the life of your general plan, like say a twenty year horizon. But if you've got an agreement with the county and the county is okay with your, your sphere and your general plan, then Lafco really has to come up with some good arguments on why that boundary shouldn't be approved. So it's, it's to the city's advantage to have an agreement with the county, not only to try to get the commission's approval, but also um it, it gives you more leverage when you get to Lafco on, on staff being fussy over, over your boundary. Not that we, we can't raise issues, but um that agreement is, carries a lot of weight in, in, in law. So it's a good, it's definitely a good measure to have. And uh to your staff's credit, um we did have a, a joint conference call with, that Stacy held with our, with your consultant and with the county planning department and Lafco. So we talked about the process and some general issues. And uh, you know, I've talked about the last general plan update effort. So it's good to include us early in the process and consistently. So we, we can hopefully come to a general plan boundary and then a, a sphere of boundary that's mutually agreeable early on. And uh that makes the process easier. So I, I just wanna commend your, your staff for, for that. Okay, next slide. Yeah, the, the factors, I went over the factors for the municipal service review document, but in a sphere, there's five factors that we have to evaluate. The, the present and planned land uses within the boundary, including um agricultural and open space lands, which like the existing resources, the present and probable need for public facilities and services in the area. And again, that's tied to what you figure to urbanize, being a city. Would you, you have a plan to, to survey area or you just say, well, we're, we'll figure it out later. We want it to be industrial and um we'll, we'll figure it out later, but just put it in the sphere. Trust us. The, then the present capacity of public facilities now. So if you, if you have a cease and desist order for your sewer plant, for instance, and you're proposing a ba- a big boundary and a lot of growth and you haven't figured out how to, how to maintain the existing services for current residents, then it becomes more challenging. So um that's part of your, your facility master plans that, that you would be doing during the, the general plan update and your SEQA documents, of course. The existence of any social or economic communities of interest in the area. And that primarily goes to the disadvantaged communities if there's unincorporated development that's being in, excluded or included um in your fringe area. And you don't have a lot of that in, in your case for Los Banos. It could be affordable housing is, is another issue that comes in. And I, it, it doesn't really include ag because that's already, that's covered earlier under number one. And then finally, it's a need for public facilities and services. Oh, I'm sorry, the disadvantaged community is its own special um item that was added in number five. So the other social and economic interest could be, um in your case, you have the, the wetland issue with grasslands. So um although that's kind of included the open space, there may be um impacts. I know, I know the grasslands gotten issues of light and glare affecting the, the bird migration. So you may not develop, but right next to a, a pond or a wetland area, but they, they say, well, if you're a half mile away, you're gonna have impacts with your lighting. So um so those could be social considerations um that we, that we would look at. So I think that's it, Stacy. Nope, there's a little bit more, okay. So um, yeah, once we get an application and we, we notify various agencies and we do notify the school districts even when we have no jurisdiction over it, but they're part of the um notification process. And again, it's surrounding districts, special districts like the ag districts, there are other um uh resource agencies. And then um we'll, we'll use your SEQA document um as a responsible agency. And uh then we'll hold our own notice of public hearing. And then the commission has the option to either um approve your, your proposed sphere, deny it or modify it and, you know, move the line somewhere where the commission is comfortable. And again, just re- reinforce that Lafco has the authorities, authority to establish the sphere. So your general plan could show one, but it's not your social sphere unless Lafco adopts it. And it's, becomes then on, uh it's Lafco's sphere for Los Banos. And of course, we would post it up on our website. So um, yeah, so the commission has all those, those options. And the whole process is also subject to litigation. So um the city could sue Lafco or some other interest group could sue um Lafco and the city over, or the, the sphere action. So um again, why it's good to be working together, part partnership in the, in the whole program. Okay. There we go. So now I've finally got to the end and um I'm just available for answering any questions that you have. And just wanna thank again the opportunity to give you this overview at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. I'll go to council and see if any council members have any questions or comments. Uh Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions or comments, thank you, Mr..
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. Um I want to go back uh to the beginning under the nineteen sixty-three legislative compromise where it says Lafco is an independent agency with no appeal from Lafco decisions to other local agencies such as county. But is there an appeal process of any kind? Can you appeal to the state uh regarding a decision by Lafco?
Um no, there's, there's actually a, the only process is after Lafco takes action, there's a thirty-day reconsideration period. And that is a period where Lafco can be asked, either a commissioner who voted um can ask for reconsideration or an applicant or someone from the public can ask Lafco to reconsider. And they have thirty days to request it. It's very limited. You, you have to raise an issue that the commission maybe didn't have all the information or all the facts. And um actually, when we approve something, we do it by resolution. And uh they have to show that there's some, there's some flaw or error in the, in the resolution also or, or our conclusions, basically. But the body then deciding what to do if we reconsider is still Lafco. It's not some other, it's not a state agency. It's not um the county, it's not the courts. So once, once Lafco decides to reconsider or chooses not to reconsider, um then it's still done. And your only recourse at that point would be the courts to say that Lafco did something wrong. There is no state appeal.
And then under who is Lafco, Merced Lafco, and I see on your website, you have, I think it's seven active members and one alternative. Of those members, how many are on the east side and how many are on the west side?
Okay, yes. So as I mentioned earlier on the cities, we always have an east side, a c- council member or mayor and a west side mayor. So we, right now, we have a um representative from uh Gustine from the west side and then representative from Merced on the east side. And then the alternate is from the west side from Dos Palos. And that alternate, the, the terms are four years. So that alternate would become a regular member um in a year when Pat Nagy from Gustine's term ends. And so, so then the two regular members will still be from the east and the west. And the next alternate will come from the east side and replace Matt Serrato um from Merced when, when their, his term is up.
So right now, you have three people from the west side and the remainder from the east side that are on your committee.
So then the public member is from the west side. He's actually from Dos Palos and he's been the public member um on and off for twenty plus years. So you, you've got a built-in um uh regular member uh as the public member that's not affiliated with the county or the cities or special districts, um Bob Bertello. And the alternate is from the east side. Um and he only gets to vote if the alter, if the regular member isn't present. And um Commissioner Bertello is almost always present. So you've got, you've got a vote on the west side there pretty constantly. Then on the county level, although there's no law or policy adopted by the board, the board has traditionally tried to appoint a supervisor from the east side and the west side to represent um to, to be the members on Lafco. And so for, forever, you had supervisor Obanion was on Lafco for n- not only his whole career with the county, but he was a member from the city of Dos Palos when he was uh from the city. So he was on Lafco for his, his public sector career. Um and then he got replaced by Scott Silbera when he was with the city as a city rep. And now Scott Silbera is on the commission as a county rep. And of course, he's from the west side. So it continues, um the, there is county representation from the east side with um Rodrigo Espinoza from Livingston areas, you know, this district is much bigger. So you have, the the commission has tried to balance east and west using the San Joaquin River. And if you're up in in Delhi or Hilmar, you'd find that the the county doesn't do good north and south because there's nobody necessarily from those communities. And they feel just as isolated from the Merced area as you probably do on the west side of the San Joaquin River. So the Merced River is another geographic feature that tends to isolate. But there is no, there's no boundary that that follows the board supervisor district. And no, no city north of the river that that gets representation either.
Okay, and then under Lafco responsibilities, under number, the second bullet says, regulates the extension of public services outside of the boundaries within annexations in limited cases. And you had brought up Ronnie's landscape. I didn't quite understand what, I guess what I heard you say is that Lafco gave water, but there was nothing in regards to annexing in the in the city. Is that how I understood you to say that?
Yeah, I didn't go, it's it's instead of annexing, you're providing a service outside your boundary. And typically, it's because you can't annex, maybe it's not contiguous to the city, and it has to be contiguous in order to annex it. So Ronnie's landscaping was was not in the city or across the street from the city. And their water was going bad and the, or had been bad for years. And the state, and the state actually is pushing this. There's more authority now for the state water board to require consolidations or connections. So we're we're getting a bigger push on that. But yeah, it's instead of annexing, you you provide the service outside your boundary. To meet the law, there's a provision that if it's within your sphere of influence, that that surface extension is is a temporary extension without annexing. And in the future, you will annex. And so cities not only voluntarily do this, but Lafco would make it a condition that you enter agreement with the landowner, that they don't protest annexation later. That when when it's time for the city to annex and you're ready to annex, you can come and annex their property. And of course, Lafco has to approve it, but the landowner doesn't have a right to say no. And that is one thing I didn't mention. I was focused more on your general plan and spheres of influence. But on annexations, contrary to everything you do, where if you decide to approve a subdivision map or a conditional use permit, your decision carries a day. In Lafco, if we're approving an annexation and you have a bunch of residents living in the area or landowners, they can protest that annexation, they can actually stop it. Even though you approved it and submitted it to Lafco, Lafco approved it. They, we have a protest hearing process and they can protest it. So a as a requirement for getting your sewer or your water, those are the two main services that are provided outside. The landowner would enter an agreement with the city that's recorded and it runs with the land. So future buyers are aware of it, that they can't fight annexation in the future when the land becomes contiguous and the city is ready to, maybe you're going to bring in that property along with a new development that's going on next door. And
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, and that works within your, within the sphere. If it's outside the sphere, such as the Housing Authorities Farm Labor Camp, that was a strictly health and safety issue where they're drinking bottled water for migrant farm workers. The city probably has no interest in annexing that land ever. But for health and safety purposes, you're extending that service. And there's no requirement that you would have to annex it at any time. You're just doing a good service. It is usually supported by state agencies and usually grants. There's 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 state money coming in to help pay for that extension.
So within the city of Los Palos, throughout, not in any particular area, there are pockets of areas that are like sitting in the middle of city limits, but it's still county. And, you know, residents want to stay that way. So they, some of them may be receiving city services, some may not. I don't I don't really know which ones are and which ones aren't. But the, how does Lafco review those pockets within cities?
Yeah, periodically, we do, we do that with our municipal service reviews. But there gets very difficult to try to get those, it's one of the priorities of Lafco is to get rid of the islands. They're, you know, they're called unincorporated islands. But because of the protest process, it's harder. They did change the law at the state level to allow annexations without a protest if they're areas smaller than a hundred acres. And that would be most of those, your case in Los Palos, that you could do it without the people's right to protest. They're going to be very angry and upset. So the, we usually, as Lafco, we rely on the city to be the applicant because you're going to be, typically, they have one service, maybe they have water, but they're on septic. And if you have sewer available, then you could make sewer available and maybe even a discounted rate or if there's grant money. But it's hard for Lafco to say, go annex it. And the city goes, well, we have no ability to serve it right now, no plan to serve it. And the people out there don't want to be annexed. So we don't really initiate that at Lafco. We haven't initiated at Lafco unless the the city is is cooperating or working on a program to serve the area. And there's a few cases, again, you're you're not so bad in Los Palos, but Merced has a lot of unincorporated development all around the city limits. And not too many islands, but peninsulas where the city's grown up around it and left these areas behind. And it's a real mess. And they lack, they again, generally, they have water because they're small lots, but they're on septic. And the city doesn't want any liability over septic. They don't want to annex them. And if to bring in sewer is very expensive. So the state, again, is involved, the water board, to try to clean up. The septic tanks are bad and they're on small lots that don't meet current standards. So it takes, it takes a plan with money, grant money typically, to help because they're, you're going to be usually poor, disadvantaged community. So it takes a united effort. And we would totally support doing that, and we would support it in Los Palos's case, too. It's a matter of how do you get the funding to provide the additional service? It's not, not there. And then, yeah, in in your case, I think you could do it without a protest with landowners. But you have a, there's still a vote for city council. So it's it's a hornets net of issues. But but the Lafco law does promote that we try to get those islands removed. And even more so, don't create new ones. Don't, don't leapfrog around parcels that are left behind and and then create a problem in the future.
And then lastly, you touched a bit on the Los Palos general plan, two thousand and twelve. There's a map here that shows the city limits, the proposed sphere of influence and the existing sphere of influence. And I I think you had indicated that staff has had conversation with your organization about some proposals the council has has made about the sphere of influence in various areas of of the city. And and as far as moving in a in a possible another direction, I, at least that's what I thought I heard you say. But when we work through our general plan, whatever sphere of influence that we as a council is designating, we have to work out an agreement with the county first, and then it goes to your organization. Is that how it works?
You, you have to try to work out an agreement. You don't have to work one out, but you have to try.
It it would be advantageous to do that because what I heard you say is that you don't want to get in the middle of anything and you would hope that the city and county can work things out. So I I would assume that would be the first step if there's any change in a sphere of influence, one way or another, that we go through the county first to to try to work out the deal and then bring it to Lafco based on some sort of joint agreement.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and I, just to be clear, it's not so we don't get in the middle of it. But our our criteria could be, that I, those points that I went over, that it's not a, it's not an appropriate sphere in in Lafco staff's view, let's say, not the commission but staff. But you were able to go to the county and the county agreed to that boundary. Then it it kind of twists staff's arm a little bit that, okay, the county seems to agree to it. And if you have some issues on it's too big or it's, there's too much prime ag land in it or some other, some other issue, we're kind of, not that we wouldn't raise it, but we're, we have to downplay that more. And the commission has to recognize that, hey, the city and county reached an agreement. And so you kind of default to that as being a good boundary unless you really have a legitimate reason, as Lafco, under the Lafco law, to not follow that and come up with some other boundary.
Very much, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. Mr. Yamas, any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, we thank you for coming tonight. I'll turn it back over to Economic Director Elms at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson, for coming. That was a very educational, informative presentation. If the council doesn't have any further questions, that would conclude staff's report.
Thank you very much. We thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Nicholson, thank you. Elms for bringing, bringing him here. Hopefully, our council and the public at large watching has learned Lafco's function. It's a very, very important agency that people don't hear a lot about. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to item nine, public hearing. We have just one tonight. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item nine A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of the annual adjustment for the Los Palos Development Impact Fee Schedule based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. And with this, we're going to be considering City Council Resolution Number six three eight nine, approving an increase in developmental impact fees to reflect increases in the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index for two thousand and twenty-one. And for this item, we go back to Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So there's a PowerPoint presentation with this item. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So just a bit of background on development impact fees and where we are today with our development impact fees. So back in January of two thousand and twenty, the city council approved the Development Impact Fee Justification Study that was prepared by David Tossigan Associates, DTA. This reflected our development horizon, the city of Los Palos's development horizon of our two thousand and thirty general plan and our police station needs assessment. So based on that analysis, we developed a needs list and the costs associated with those public facilities. And that is what developed our justification study, which is also known as AB sixteen hundred fees or a nexus. So development impact fees are established in conformance with the requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act. This is done by identifying additional public facilities required by new development. So a, a fee cannot include costs that are caused by existing deficiencies, but fund costs used to maintain the existing level of service or meet an adopted level of service that is consistent with the general plan. And this original law of the Mitigation Fee Act was adopted by the state of California in nineteen eighty-seven. And this particular last bullet was amended, the law was amended back in two thousand and six to specify that the city cannot use development impact fees to cover a cost that is caused by an existing deficiency. So next slide. Development impact fees do not pay for operation and maintenance of capital facilities. So that is is one item that need, that needs to be understood, or city staffing costs. So it cannot play, pay for employees and it cannot pay for the maintenance of facilities. And the development impact fees are separated from the general fund and from other city budget funds or accounts containing fees collected for other purposes. So we keep them separated, we do not co-mingle. And those funds are to be allocated for those public facilities that were identified within our capital facilities list, which is our needs list identified in our justification study. Next slide. So the annual adjustment, that's the proposal before you today, that is pursuant to the resolution that was adopted back in January two thousand and twenty, which adopted the justification study, that's Resolution Number six one six three, states that impact fees shall be modified annually each July first. And what that that provision within that resolution did was it gave the city council the ability to adjust each year annually based on the construction cost index. So what is proposed before you tonight is based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, which is also known as the CCI. And it's as reported for the twelve month period ending in April of two thousand and twenty-one. So the adjustment that's proposed before you tonight is for a two point seven percent increase. And this increase would be applied to all development impact fees and would go into effect sixty days if approved. I do want to clarify, I did not provide a table, but I, it is within the staff report as an exhibit what all of those fees are that are broken down within our development impact fees. So they go to fire, police, parks and recreation, water, sewer, storm drain facilities, traffic facilities, general government facilities. And there's an administration fee as well built within our fee schedule. Next slide. This particular slide breaks down the comparison chart of our current fee, which that's, those are the fees that were adopted in January of two thousand and twenty with our development impact fee study and the proposed fee, which is based on that two point seven percent increase. And that comes from the construction cost index. So you can see for a single family, it's it's broken on land use classifications. So single family and multifamily and age restricted are based on dwelling unit. So it's, that fee would be paced, paid per unit based on that classification. Those uses that are asterisk, which are retail, office, institution and industrial, are based on per every thousand square feet. So if you have a ten thousand square foot building, it would be based, it would be that fee times ten. Any questions? I'll stop it for a minute just to provide a moment for some questions. I know this can be a bit complex, the fee study has a, has several moving parts within it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Okay, I'll go through council. Mr. Jones, any questions?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
I I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. These fees are for new buildings or new residential homes that are being built. This is the fees that are added into those.
Yes, that is correct. That is for all new development, whether it's residential, retail, office, institutional or industrial, all new development. If you're building a new building, that that has an associated new impact to the city that the development impact fees would then need to be collected prior to issuance of a building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilmember Lambert just proposed a question I was going to ask for clarification for the public as well as for council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Yamas?
No questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. Raising the, raising the fee to build stuff based on the cost of operating things. This chart here is nice and clear. And it's a small increase, just keeping up with the cost of living. So with that, Chair will entertain a motion.
Oh, hang on, I'm sorry.
Oh, I gotta open a public hearing. Gotta open a public hearing, sorry about that.
That, and there's, I do have a couple more slides just to cover some procedural.
Sorry about that. Let's get those procedural slides done and then I'll open the public hearing.
Next is just the environmental review. So the development impact fee annual adjustment is exempt per SEQA Guideline Section one five zero six one in that there is no direct or indirect change. And then next on the environment, next slide. The fiscal impact, so the two point seven percent increase would ensure new development is adequately funded. is adequately funding its fair share of the cost of new public facilities as the cost to construct these projects increase over time. And we can see that every day. You can go down to Home Depot and buy a sheet of plywood and you can see that the cost has increased over time, even just from last year or even just from a couple of months ago. And so we need to keep up with the construction cost index so that when we are ready to build that new public facility using, you know, whether it's our new police station or a new fire station, that we are adequately collecting the fees that it would cost to build that facility. And then also ensures the city does not subsidize new development's share of these facilities and that adequate funding is available when the city is ready to construct those projects. I see there's a question, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you want to wait.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, see your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Stacy, there's a, let's see, some information included in the packet for the, it's called Engineering News Report, which is the city cost index out of San Francisco as of May 21st. Now, I see there's an area outline, which I'm sure is the cost of index, the 2.7 that we're using. But there are different dates and different years and the cost of index changes depending on, you know, what time it is. Like October 2020 was 5.1%. So does it depend when you're able to apply for this cost of index? Or I'm not sure what determined when we were able to apply for this change for the cost of index rate.
Here, so a couple of slides ago, it was stated under Resolution Number 6163 that that gives the city direction and the council direction on how to modify annually the review and analyze whether an annual adjustment is warranted. And within Resolution 6163, it states that it needs to be based on the Engineering News Records Construction Cost Index reported for the 12-month period ending in April. So that's why we're using April of 2021 and that percent change based on that month. And that percent change over that 12-month period was 2.7%. So based on that resolution.
So it will always be in April for us?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
And that gives, why that was, just to give you an understanding of why was April picked? It was because the resolution states that that annual adjustment needs to happen by July 1st of every year. And it was to give staff enough time to come to the City Council with that annual adjustment. And those annual adjustments take 60 days to go into effect. This year, we're a little bit behind as we're catching up. And this is our first annual adjustment with this new NEXUS. But from here on out, you would probably see this come in May. And that's what we're calendaring it for so that we would see the engineers' cost report, the engineering news report, and then the construction cost index for April that would be determined. And we would move into asking for council consideration if there is an increase. If there is no increase, staff will not be recommending any increases.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. All right, Stacy?
Okay.
Ms. Jones, we have anything further before we go to the public?
You have just a couple more slides?
Absolutely.
Public hearing notice was published in the Los Manos Enterprise on June 18, 2021. And in addition, local developers were mailed notices. And the Building Industry Association, the BIA of the Greater Valley, was also directly mailed notice on June 16. I did, I have not received any formal comments. However, I did receive feedback from the development community and just a statement that additional increases in development impact fees are coming during a difficult time with inflation and the extreme development costs that they are experiencing. But from the city's perspective, that just further validates why we need to keep up with the construction cost index and those increases in the construction costs so that we can build those facilities and that development is paying its adequate share for those facilities. Next slide. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council would open the public hearing to hear any public comments regarding the proposed impact fee adjustment. Find the proposed impact fee adjustment exempt from SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Section 15061B3 and then adopt Resolution Number 6389 approving a 2.7% increase to development impact fees to reflect construction cost changes in 2021 to become effective 60 days after adoption. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. If we have no questions, I'll look for hands if anyone has any questions before I go to the public hearing. Okay. So seeing no hands, we will open the public hearing now to receive public report and public commentary on City Council Resolution Number 6389. Ms. Blevins?
No comments have been received, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Having received no comments, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for a motion. And the Chair will entertain a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6389. Would any council member like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6389 as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Councilmember Lambert to approve City Council Resolution Number 6389. Ms. Blevins, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for excellent presentation on that item. And now we will move to item 10. Consideration of Ordinance Number 1191, amending Title II, Chapter 1, Article 2, Section 2-1.202 Meetings of the Los Manos Municipal Code to change the City Council Meeting Start Time from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we're going to be, for the second reading and the adoption. And for that, we go to City Attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This matter was before you on the last City Council Meeting of June 16th, at which time you waived the first reading and you introduced Ordinance Number 1191. There was a couple of prior meetings where the ordinance was discussed, I think based on Mrs. Lewis's council member request. Tonight, it's before you for the second reading and adoption. That's what you wish to do. It's a very simple ordinance. It simply changes the meeting time of your City Council Meetings from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Your meeting now at 4:00 p.m. based on your emergency proclamation, which is due to expire before this would take effect. So it would essentially, the 6 o'clock start time would coincide with the second meeting in August. And it can either be virtual or in person. And I don't think that issue has been resolved as of tonight's meeting. Just to give you a heads up, though, that at that second meeting in August, the start time will be 6:00 p.m. And yet to be decided as to whether it will be virtual or in person. The ordinance actually cleans up some language in the original code section to make it clearer. They're not significant changes, but just indicating that if the meeting date start actually hits a city holiday, that the meeting will be rolled over to the next regular night. That's not a holiday. But that's really the only major thing that the ordinance does other than change your start time from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So it's staff's recommendation that you waive the second reading and you adopt Ordinance Number 1191. And I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. We'll go through council. Any questions? Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Mr. Lambert?
No questions here.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Yamas?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have no questions. Chair will entertain a motion to approve City Council Ordinance Number 1191. No, to.
Actually, we need a motion to waive the second reading.
Yes. Waive the second reading. Gotta get more sleep. Chair will entertain a motion to waive the second reading for Ordinance Number 1191.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1191 as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, second by Councilmember Lambert to waive the second reading of Ordinance 1191. Roll call, Ms. Blevins?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. And now we'll go back to Ms. Lewis for a motion for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1191 as read by title.
Mr. Lambert?
I second that also, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, second by Councilmember Lambert to adopt Ordinance Number 1191. Roll call, please, Ms. Blevins.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia.
Yes, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to the same, similar discussion, we'll move to item 11. Consideration of Ordinance Number 1192.
Yes. Sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. I'll go ahead and read it out. Amending Title II, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2-2.210 Meetings of the Los Manos Municipal Code to change the Planning Commission Meeting Start Time from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we'll go back to City Attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Very similar to the Ordinance Number 1191, this ordinance amends the start times for the Planning Commission. And those are held on the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month. This was considered by you on the last City Council Meeting on June 16th. And you took action to waive the first reading and to introduce that ordinance. So that's almost virtually identical to the City Council ordinance. However, I did note in the code section that the code is a little bit different. But it does essentially the same thing. And I tried to standardize the language between the two ordinances. So we're asking tonight that you waive the second reading and consider adoption of Ordinance Number 1192, which would take effect in 31 days, just in time for the second Planning Commission Meeting in August. And again, as is the meetings for the City Council, it will either be held virtually or in person. The only change will be it will move from, I think their start time right now is 5:30. It would move from 5:30 to 6:00. So I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yamas?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Hearing no questions, and I have none. Chair will entertain a motion to waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1192 as read.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you.
I'd like to make the motion to waive the second reading of the Ordinance 1192 as it's read by title.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Councilmember Yamas to waive the second reading of Ordinance 1192. Ms. Blevins, roll call.
Jones? Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Waive the second reading. We'll now go to the adoption. And Mr. Lambert, would you like to make that motion as well?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the motion to adopt Ordinance 1192 as read by title.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lambert, that was Mr. Blevins.
Yes, that was Mr. Lambert. Motion by Mr. Lambert, second by Mr. Yamas to adopt Ordinance Number 1192. Roll call, Ms. Blevins?
Jones?
Yep.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia.
Yes, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Just note for the public, when you vote, we talk about waiving the first and second reading. That means we're not going to read the entire ordinance. It's written into the record. And otherwise, we would be reading all these ordinances in entirety, which could take a good deal of time. So that's why we do that. We'll now move to item 12, which is our street naming policy discussion. And for that, we will go to Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I do have a PowerPoint, should be brief. So we'll get right into it. Next slide. Just a bit of background. Back in March, the City Council did receive a council member request from Mayor Furia regarding a street naming policy. And the City Council at that meeting directed staff to look into a possible street naming committee, explore policies related to street naming or renaming and/or renaming, and bring findings back to the City Council for further consideration. Next slide. So staff has, for the past few months, researched other communities and has gone through their various policies to see how we could create and develop and what we liked of those particular policies to be able to bring back for City Council consideration. And what we saw were that there are standard guidelines that are very similar in each community. And those standard guidelines are very basic, like no duplication, for instance, of, you know, existing names, street names. It needs to be phonetically easy to pronounce. The spelling needs to be phonetically. There needs to be standardization in suffixes. There needs to be name continuity. So those are very specific, very industry standard. And those are in every community's policy. And so with those standard guidelines, staff is looking, yes, to definitely build those within our policy and to establish that policy, which we do not have today. But then what we're asking for the council is consideration on specific options. And that's to help guide and direct on how other communities really deal with these other considerations. So it's the review process, the criteria, special criteria, and the commemorative name, street names, are dealt with in various different ways all across the board with many communities throughout the state of California. So we've picked and pooled some ideas and we're proposing those as key components for your consideration tonight. So next slide. So first off, I do want to touch on street naming. What we were directed back in March was to come back with some consideration to possibly a street renaming policy. And what staff is recommending at this time is And what staff is recommending at this time is, it is not to include, we are not recommending a street naming policy. Um, this is not standard throughout the state of California. Actually, cities that do have a street renaming policy are in the minority, um, most cities prohibit it, and that's because it leads to confusion and inconvenience for residents and businesses, emergency personnel, visitors, utilities, service personnel, and the United States Postal Service. Um, so instead, staff is recommending a commemorative street naming policy, uh, which I am going to get into in a little bit more detail in a couple of slides, uh, but that's staff's solution to a street renaming policy. Um, I will, we do have existing examples where, um, we've had streets renamed that had no dwelling units within them, so they were local residential streets that had not had any houses built on them, but, um, for instance, in Mission Village South, uh, Las Palmas is, is a good example. That's right next to Grasslands Elementary, and prior to Grasslands Elementary being built, it wasn't quite known, you know, how the streets were all going to be laid out. So Las Palmas, um, until the school was developed and, and the rest of that area was mapped out, it then was very clear that Las Palmas colla, connects to San Juan Batista. Well, we needed to rename San Juan Batista to Las Palmas Street, so that there was continuity. The issue with that renaming is something that we, we've done, it was done, it's corrected a couple of years, um, or about a year or more so ago, prior to any houses being built, but it has become an issue with title each and every time, because title will still pick up the original name of San Juan Batista, and it just becomes in the future an issue with that property. And to avoid that confusion, we are suggesting not to have a street renaming policy at all. If anything, if we want to rename streets, that we would commemoratively rename them. Next slide. So we're going to start with the review process. So many, like I said, different cities do, um, the review process in different ways, and so staff is seeking direction on how to review who has jurisdiction over that review of those names, um, and what process would be established. So, um, staff is recommending three options, and we're recommending direction on one of these three options, um, or an option maybe staff hasn't thought of. But, um, first option would be to establish a street naming committee for review and recommendation, um, to the planning commission. So this would be an ad hoc committee, uh, that would just be focused on street naming. Uh, that would be their, their sole duty, and they would be advisory to the planning commission. Next would be, an option could be to have the planning commission review proposed street names concurrent with the approval of tentative subdivision maps. This is more common, um, in most cities, they'll have that jurisdiction with the planning commission as they're removing, reviewing tentative maps, that they're also reviewing those street names. And then, uh, the last option would be to have the Community and Economic Development Director conduct an internal department review and either approve or deny proposed street names based on the criteria and standards that would be established within the policy. So I'm going to take a moment, I know I went through that very quickly, but what staff is seeking direction is on one of these three options, um, and whether to move forward with providing that as a part of the review process. That would be a key component of how our policy would be developed.
Okay. Uh, let, uh, let me go, uh, ask council. Uh, let's go ahead, and since this is more of a discussion, uh, let's go ahead and use the hand raising feature if we could. Any council members wishing to chime in on this at this point, on this review process, uh, please raise your hand. Address that. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, I'm, I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of any of the three options that have been put forward to us. What I would like to see, and this would, uh, mean that there's going to be some upgrading into how we do our communities, and, um, what I want to see for Los Manos is I want to see us start the process where we have planned communities and we have master plans. And in those master plans, depending on what the theme of that community is going to be, will determine what the street names are going to be. But, um, I, I, you know, what I'm, I'm trying to propose here is looking to the future, uh, for Los Manos, that we as a council, um, uh, try to help set up a process where we have master plans for our communities, and not just randomly have developers decide how our community is going to be developed, that that comes from within the city. Uh, so I, I would like to see the street naming policy be a part of the master planning that, uh, I feel that we should start developing for the city of Los Manos. And for me, it doesn't matter if it's, you know, a five, ten acre development, it, it needs to be master planned, and, and what we've done in years past is just allow the developer to come with a master plan, and we have to kind of like figure our way through it, whether it's good or not, or whatever, and by the time it gets to council, there are things within that plan that we may or may not approve of. So I, I, I'd like to see us start in a different direction about how we do development in this city, and with that process, the street naming can go inside of that. So that's, that's my take on it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, second hand, I saw, Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor. Um, I kind of like the third option here, have, uh, the Community and Economic Development Director conduct an internal department review, and either approve or deny, uh, proposed street names based on criteria and standards, but the reason for that is, uh, staff is in this elbow deep, they know what would work, what wouldn't, and I would, if we go forward with a route like that, where staff does the legwork, get it going, I would still like council just to, uh, glance over what names are going where, especially on, uh, new developments, um, and that way council can have a final approval on it, just in case council had another idea, or council needs to speak up a little earlier on when there's development being proposed, about if there's any streets that, uh, may, they may want special names on it. Um, I know there's been a couple names brought forward before, that would be nice to integrate in, but, uh, I know the proposed streets, that they were talking about renaming, um, are not really the nicest streets, and I'd like to kind of change that, uh, kind of, uh, that, uh, mindset that some of these names have to be in certain, maybe industrial areas or something like that, and maybe we should try to change that and put them in nicer areas, nicer developments. Maybe not necessarily residential, but maybe in areas where there's, uh, some strong economic development. So, that's all, Mayor.
Uh, very good. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, next I have Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I, I kind of followed, uh, the third step there also, but having some of the guidelines also that Ms. Lewis also put in there, uh, follow the, the theme in some of the residential. Uh, but I also have a, maybe on the commem, uh, commemorative, commemorative?
Commemorative?
Yeah. Um, so I, I used to be on, well, used to not be, but I used to go down a street that had a commemorative, and it was still, I'm going to just throw this one out there, Seventh Street slash, uh, the commemorative. So it was always, so if we renamed one as a commemorative, you're still going to have whatever street we call it, but it's still, that way it doesn't mess up, or, you know, mess with the UPS, or, you know, uh, the postal service. Uh, and that, that could be a possibility, uh, for that. I, I just wanted to throw that out there, just for the commemorative, but I still follow the, the step three. Uh, I would like to see that, but, so I have some of the guidelines that we could follow through, that Ms. Lewis put in there also, uh, following the theme, and still come before us, uh, so we could take a look at it beforehand also.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, if I recall the discussion, the discussion wasn't so much to rename, but to try to, as Mrs. Lewis was stating, uh, put our imprint on the development instead of just, uh, receiving the end product and accepting whatever development decided was going to be the street names. Uh, I know, uh, Mayor and I, we went back and forth about, uh, some themes of World War Two, et cetera, and I think that's where I'd like to go, is that, uh, uh, that this be brought to the developers, say, let them know, hey, this new development is going to have this theme, it's something that we, again, are shaping our, our, our environment, uh, we are, uh, commemorating, uh, events, times, uh, historical events, things like that, so that, again, we are dictating the shaping of our, of our, of our community, as Mrs. Lewis had stated, instead of, again, receiving a product. So, again, not so much a renaming of streets, in my opinion, but a, a being proactive in the naming of the new developments. Uh, and, and so, and as far as the review process, uh, you know, planning commission is fine, but I think that if we take that proactive stance, the staff is already going to, to do that, review that by the planning commission or the city council, either one is fine, but again, is dictating not just receiving the product. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see some hands still up, or are they still up, or are they up again? All right. So, um, thank you. And so, uh, it's pretty clear, uh, council, from what I can tell, council wants to have some, some big time input. It's a matter of at what stage, I think, um, and, you know, do we want to look at a master, some kind of advanced master, uh, plan of street naming? Uh, do we want to, uh, do we want to wait until a developer requests an annexation of or construction, and then we sit down with that developer and say, where are you going with it, what are you planning to do? Uh, and it's because it's in this location, this layout, uh, council would like to see. Uh, do you have any particular ideas? And council would like to see, uh, some names on those streets. Um, Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question's from Ms. Elms. Stacy, what is the procedure when they bring this to you? When, when, when is, uh, when do they start bringing this to you, before all this has happened?
So at this point, so just to be clear, we have, we do not have a policy established. Um, so the informal pol, policy, the process that, um, the street naming process goes through, is the developer brings that name forward prior to the final map being approved and recorded, um, so that that street name gets memorialized with that final map and gets recorded. Um, the process that it goes through is just an internal check between the Community and Economic Development Department and the Fire Department. So we go, we do, there is all, a typical condition of approval that requires, um, approval of street names, uh, for each subdivision by the fire chief, and that's to make sure that Public Safety Dispatch specifically can, can phonetically say the name, um, that it's not duplicated, um, and, um, that there wouldn't be any conflicts. So that's internally what we go through to make sure that it's okay. Uh, we're also looking how that street lines up with other streets, um, and to make sure that there's continuity. So internally, um, you know, we do have an informal process, um, where we're checking to make sure that things, um, that, that streets are lining up. Um, but in terms of what names get chosen, um, or even what the themes are, the staff does not, we do not have a policy that establishes what names can be used, um, or what themes are to be used. Um, so I, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I'll give you an example of one of the cities that I went to look at, uh, in regards to their master planning. Historically, we've hired a lot of companies to give us ideas about how to master plan, you know, what our city should look like, what kind of products we should build, and we drop that information and it just goes into oblivion of nowhere, and we wasted money. And I think it's time for us as a city to move into the twenty-first century and start working in a, in a way that we master plan our city and our community, our development, not allow a developer to come in and say, I'm, you know, I want to annex this in, and we have staff, you know, planning streets and how they're going to be laid out. We need to seek professional help, and I'm not saying our staff is not professional by any chance, any stretch of the imagination, but these cities who are making some really nice projects, they have, um, economic developers, they have assistant planners, they have city planners, they have whole staff, but they still work with organizations out there that help them bring those plans to fruition, so that they're solidified. So that, that's all that I'm saying, is that we cannot continue to do business the way that we've done it for the last five hundred years. We have to do something different in order to bring our community to a higher state, a higher desirable, uh, state of living, to bring different types of things to our community, and in doing so, street naming can be part of that. Where we have these little small pockets of, of maybe an acre or two where somebody wants to develop, it, it would be very easy for staff to work with that particular person and look at the streets that are surrounding it and keeping it in continuity with that. But if we're looking at raw land that somebody wants to come and develop, I think it's time for us to get out of our comfort zone and do something different and stick with it, and not just say, we're going to hire a company and let them bring us a plan and then let them disappear. If we're going to spend money, then we need to spend money, do it right, and master plan out our city, so that we have beautiful communities, beautiful landscaping. Uh, I look at, you know, this one particular city I'm looking at, they have their, uh, their tree selections online, they have their plant selections online, everything is there. So there's absolutely no confusion for a developer about what we will allow to be planted in our community. So we, we just have to start moving in a different direction, and again, I'm only one voice speaking. But it's, it's, it's time to just do something different, and the naming of the streets is a small component, but it's a component, as I see it, as a part of master planning. And, uh, this is where we can be on the ground level to make these things happen, as, as a developer comes forward saying, I want to do a development in this community, okay, let's, let's get working on what this plan is going to look like. You know, we, we do all this annexation and, and allow them to do things, and then at the back end, you know, as we move along, things start to happen, and it, and it doesn't seem to be in the liking of council in the city, but it's too late to do it then. So the time, in my opinion, to do it, is to plan it upfront and, and close all those doors and gates, so that we end up with something that's very nice in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, but, we're going to come back around to some of those bigger concepts here in a moment. Uh, Mr. Yamas?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, I can focusing on the, uh, street naming, is, uh, these developments just decide what theme they're going to be, and, uh, just to add a little bit more direction, I guess, is assign each development a theme, that way it makes it easier, makes it easier for all parties concerned, whoever those parties may be, um, but, uh, but I think that's, uh, that's the only thing I wanted to add. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very good. Um, so, uh, uh, hands, I still see hands up, if you'd like to raise and keep them, if I could chime in again? There you go. Uh, thank you. Um, so I'm taking some notes here, and I'm sure staff is too, and, um, my own opinion is I like the idea of, of master planning. Uh, I think that's a very big, big, big thing, uh, that will be more than just a street naming situation. And if we, so the question I think we have to address tonight is, do we want to go ahead and, and, and ask staff to begin establishing that street naming process now, or do we want that street naming process to be something bigger, a part of something bigger, uh, which will take a lot more time, a lot more resources, and, uh, maybe a different approach? Uh, which will take a lot more time, a lot more resources, and a maybe a different approach. Uh, and I see Ms. Lewis's hand is up again, so I'll go ahead and recognize her there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I thought I had lowered my hand, so I'll change it again.
All right.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, provide um just a bit of clarification. Um, I I think staff absolutely understands the master planning concept and and the direction from the council. Um, but I do wanna remind the council that within the general plan update, we are providing a specific plan process, which is that master plan. I think we're using different terminology. But at the end, it is a specific plan because that is what is governed under the California legislation. Um, so within those specific plans, we can require the theme. We can have within that development identified what that theme would be, and that theme would be carried out into the street naming process. But at a specific plan level, um, it typically would get then 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 down to a tentative map where we would know then where the streets, um, a tentative map or a final map, subdivision maps are where then the streets will actually be somewhat memorialized, even though a tentative map, it can still be a little bit flexible as then the subdivision map act dictates then what gets carried forward into the final map. So I I do, I do want to just remind the council, we we definitely are. Specific plans are where our future is, where we are going. Um, we don't have a policy currently right now, so as subdivisions are coming forward, um, staff does not have guidance to determine whether names are appropriate or not. Um, so I think establishing that foundation of of where to move forward. And I think as we, as I get into the next key components, which are criteria, it it talks about themes. Um, I think that's where we're going to be weaving in some of these components that that the council is bringing up um of making sure um that subdivisions are cohesive, uh that carry forward themes and elevate and enhance our community, absolutely. Um, I think we are on the same page. Uh, the street naming policy, it it would be a component of that. Uh, but I think it would be part of probably the theme of that specific plan as we carry it forward. I think we're, I think we're speaking the same language. Um, but in the time being, the void that we have as subdivisions are coming forward, um, that already tentative mapped, we do not have guidance at 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 the moment. Um, so to establish that foundation is is, I think, what we would need in the meantime as we are standing up our specific plan process.
Okay, so we're looking for, and I'm gonna go to Mr. Breezy here in a moment. Uh, maybe we'll be look, we're looking for like a two-stage situation tonight. One is to deal with the streets that are going to be named in any developments that are coming forward at present or until that new general plan is adopted. Um, until those new policies are adopted. And then the other being um the second stage, which would be to wrap up that street naming policy into our general plan, master plan, overall plan idea. Uh, Mr. Breezy, uh, I see your hand was up and then is down.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. I was just gonna reiterate what Stacy and you just uh mentioned in that that we we have no policy currently, and this will be the first step in getting us to that general plan, specific plan, policy that we can incorporate the street naming policy into. Uh, I look at it as an opportunity for us to maybe get some of the kinks out of the process. We'll learn something from this process that we're gonna go through, and it will allow us to put something into place until that specific plan policy is completed. And who knows, there might be some tweaks, some lessons learned through this this practice that we're doing here that we can implement um in version two, which will be in that specific plan process. Uh, you you, both of you have already said all of that, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So I think the coun- council let me know if 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 my uh synopsis here differs or whether if my synopsis is good to go. Um, and that is that uh right now, I'm pretty sure council wants to have some say, the majority of the council wants to have something to say about streets, naming uh themes, what streets, what names of streets go where. And so I would ask that uh the, as any new developments are coming now, uh, let's go, if we could, bring uh proposal, the proposed development, the idea, the themes uh to council. And uh, let's just bring it straight to council and let council have some conversation about it before we go any further with it in any direction until uh we have settled in on this uh master plan, general plan, street naming concept. Um, city council, if yeah, if that sounds good to you, uh, what I'll do is I'll just go ahead and go through the council. And if if that sounds like a reasonable synopsis for direction, uh, then let me know, and I'll check with each each council member. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'll be fine, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
That would be fine with me also, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I'm okay with that, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
Yes, sir, I'll be fine.
Thank you. And I think what we have here is a council, every council has some different dynamics, and different city councils have different approaches. And I think it's quite clear that this city council wants to be very deeply involved in the development and the growth and the improvement of this city. And so we have no problem uh taking on those those issues and taking on those those ideas and discussing them here. And and really, so make sure that we get what what the people are like to us to give them. Uh, Mr. Yamas? Oh, mute? You're on mute.
Did I see uh the acting city manager, did he have his hand up, or is just uh?
I I I'm gonna, I was just gonna check on it now. Mr. Breezy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, I think what you're saying is that you obviously wanna be involved in the process, but is that third bullet point, the starting place where we can jump from the developer uh to staff level review, and then it goes to you? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, could could we see that screen point again? Um, internal department review?
Or it could be the planning commission?
Um, I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to the planning commission with it right now myself. But let me hear what the rest of council thinks. Mr. Yamas?
I just wanted to to have a little bit of of uh resident expert knowledge on on this from uh Director Elms as to what would, what she believes would be uh the best approach or what her recommendation would be on uh on the direction on this.
So um, the development names coming before the city council is is definitely up to the purview of the city council if if that's the direction. Um, but in terms of process maps, and those streets are going to the planning commission for review and approval. Right now, those streets are generically named, street name A, B, C. Um, those are just generically named until those those names get finalized. But that's a process that can be determined at the tentative map stage. Uh, the planning commission has jurisdiction over tentative maps, that's the way our ordinance is read. And it it would just be another step in a map process to have the developer come before the city council to approve the city names. Um, and I do wanna be clear that our ordinance does not give that jurisdiction to the city council. Um, the city council would be the the appeal body, but the decision-making body on a tentative map would be the planning commission.
So if I understand this correctly, there is already a quasi process for the naming. It's just hasn't been a theme like we're talking about. Um, so then, I guess, instead of trying to reinvent this whole thing, I, am I reading that he just add that language to the uh planning commission so that they take a more active role in establishing the the uh guidance being given here by the city council? Is that something along that line?
Right, it's already under their purview to review the map um with those streets, and the names would just be a component of that. Um, and to have that under their jurisdiction, it's already a part of their process. Instead of adding an additional process that isn't within the process of a map.
So I guess, I guess, the thing is to is to establish themes for these developments so that the planning commission understands what they're supposed to be looking at in approving or disapproving. Is that, would that be clear?
Right, and so that would be then the next key component. I did try to dissect it because then it does get convoluted. Um, so I tried to dissect it with first, who has, you know, who has authority over the process of those street names? Um, and tried to establish, would we create an ad hoc committee? Would it just, would it go to the planning commission with those subdivision maps? Or is it okay for staff to do it internally, um similar to what we're already doing? Um, so um, if if there is a discretionary review process, I would say having the planning commission do it would probably be most appropriate as that is as um can be simply done um to create a more formal street naming process. And then the themes would be the next, we're gonna get into themes into the criteria, uh which is in the next couple of slides.
Thank you very much, but.
Okay, so then the planning commission, uh, the tentative map come to the planning commission, street A, street B, street C. And then uh the actual naming theme thematic concept be brought to city council. At this point, until we have, until we have established our new um general plan, master planning policy, is that what we wanna do in the meantime?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna speak.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Brett.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh see, uh, I have a, I have a hand up from Ms. Lewis, but uh, Ms. Elms, though I that that question I had, is that is that something that is that what I'm understanding, the direction that we're that we're going within the parameters that are presently in place?
Uh, my understanding from um council member Yamas was that it would be through the planning commission because a map goes through the planning commission. The established process does not go through the city council unless appealed.
Okay, the the map, but does that map has to have to include the names? Or can the map just have the generic uh uh street A, B, C, 1, 2, 3? And then the name, the actual naming, the theme thematic concept brought to council, or does that have to be appealed? Or called up by council to be brought up?
No, it it, the map itself could be approved by the planning commission. The street names could be brought forward to the city council, it's just an additional process to go through for the map.
Okay, I think that would be a good idea since that process is in place and that's their jurisdiction. I think the city council would like to have the input on the naming thematic concept and that sort of thing. Um, I see a hand up, Ms. Lewis's hand is up again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I I just want to say, you know, in the 10 years when I sat on the planning commission, when maps were brought to us, I don't ever recall that streets were there to be named by the the planning commission. So um currently, as it stands, Stacy, when the planning commission gets a map, they're looking at the outlines of the streets and and such. They're not naming the streets at this point. And am I correct on that?
Right, so what we were proposing is that that would be a requirement, that the street names would then be included in the tentative map process. But you're right, it's generic, it's street A, B, or 1, 2, 3. It's just generic currently.
And currently, as it stands, the developer generally picks the names of the streets that he or she may want to have there.
Right, they propose those names.
Okay. Um, I I don't know about the other council uh members, but um if if we're moving toward, you know, with the general plan, and I'm not sure, you know, if if I'm on the same page with what uh staff is seeing as general plan and master planning versus what I've done research on, but that's something I, you know, I can clarify with them later. Um, I'm I'm just concerned whether or not with the, I don't wanna see this be a permanent state. Um, and I hear that, you know, some coun- uh council members are looking at the planning commission. I don't wanna see that as a permanent state. And 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 I have my reasons behind it. But um, I, you know, I'll just listen and see what other council members have to say uh in regards to the process right now. But I I'm not in favor of giving it to the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
So I I may have got lost right here in a little bit of this. So these three uh re- review processes, so the the second one, having the planning commission review it already, so they're already receiving it, then from what I understand, right, Stacy?
No, so they don't receive the street names as a part of their process? What we were proposing is that they would receive the street names and review it concurrent with the tentative map as that is under their jurisdiction. The tentative map is under their jurisdiction.
So once we got the the street names then, from the past, they've already been named and nobody actually got to go over them to make sure everything was all uh correct and correct?
They don't go through a discretionary review body. It is reviewed internally um with the, in conjunction with the fire chief to make sure there's no duplication. There can be phonetically said, it's that process.
Right, yeah, I understand that. So we're just trying to figure out a little better standard for the process to go through.
Right, we're trying to stop, we're asking, staff is asking to establish the process.
Okay, well, and instead of having the commission, I'm I'm kinda like Ms. Lewis, I'd rather have a little bit more say in it than, you know, the commission, I I still want the, the commissioner is still gonna receive, or the commission's gonna still receive it uh as her plan, but maybe not have the commission have the final you know, say over the names. Uh, it would still come towards the council to have a little bit more say on uh the street naming? If that's possible.
That's your wish, Mr. Lambert? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And then uh any any further question or comment, Mr. Lambert? Anyone else wanna respond to Mr. Lambert? If not, I'll move to Mr. Jones. All right, Mr. Jones? Uh, gotta mute on Mr. Jones right now.
Mayor, I I feel like we're kinda making this a little complicated for what it is. Obviously, I don't think we've really had much of an issue with like residential street naming in the past. I think, you know, staff and the developers have done a pretty good job with having things, and I kinda like that. They get a little creative and it's nice to see some of the names they put out there. But uh, you know, I think we had some some key names that were brought up a few meetings past that we wanted to incorporate in this town somewhere, maybe in future developments, but not necessarily residential because sometimes residential streets are just too small for those names. So I I think it's gonna be case by case, and maybe we just need to, when we start naming, when staff starts uh coming up with names for streets or developers, maybe they just need to be brought forward to council just to please council for a little bit until we feel pretty comfortable with maybe a process that staff develops for that. I do agree with Mr. Yamas, this is a planning commission item. Um, it's not really for council, but sometimes council likes to get uh their hands involved in this stuff. So I'm for that as well. That's on there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, so uh it it seems, and once we, I'll try to 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 kinda put a synopsis on the second round here. And that the planning commission, and so of course they have their jurisdiction. Um, and they approve the tentative maps. Uh, but I think council has expressed a desire to have input on the names, the themes, until we can come up with a policy which we include in a master, some, in our master plan or general plan. Uh, if we're going to include include this master planning concept, which seems to be the direction staff is going, um, to, once we get that in place, then we would include that, the street theme naming that. So does that make sense? Uh, and does that seem like a an understandable and followable and doable, clear enough direction for staff? Uh, and does that seem like a, an understandable and followable and doable, clear enough direction for staff?
Yes, I think staff has the direction on that item.
Okay, Mr. Lambert?
Yes, I, I just wanna go back, I, I know a couple of meetings ago, several meetings ago, you know, we, what actually started this process was, I, I believe we were brought to attention of possibly renaming, uh, MLK, Martin Luther King, uh, street. So my actually comment earlier on the commemorative name, uh, I mean, what would be the process for this, you know, you know, because that was the whole question that started all this. Uh, as the commemorative name, Martin Luther King. Uh, that's why I kinda threw it out there, you know, we can still have G Street in our, some of the areas. But then what's, it's, it would still be G Street slash MLK. Uh, if, that way it doesn't interfere with, uh, you know, possibly the, you know, the United States Postal Service. But it would still represent that street as, uh, some people may recognize it as MLK Boulevard, or MLK Street, or possibly G Street. But I believe that's what actually kinda really started all the process. Uh, I just wanted to jump back and just kinda let everybody, because I, I didn't, I didn't hear too much more of that come up.
Reminding us where it all started, yes, and that's where it did start. Um, and, uh, and Mr. Breezy?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted, as we're talking through this process with it, seems like it, it will, um, it will cause staff to have to go back. If the council is the reviewing body for a portion of the process, having them be the appeal body and the, like a reviewing body, that might be a conflict, so we might have to, it might, um, require an ordinance change in order to accomplish that. And I don't think that's anything that we're opposed to, I just want to bring that to light because that will likely slow the process down by a couple of, of months, as you saw tonight in the, in the process of changing the meeting times. Uh, but for the sake of, of, uh, staff and moving this process forward, um, yeah, it's the clearer we can be in, in the process of one of these three bullet points, the, the better I think we can move forward and produce something that you'll, you'll, you'll be fond of and appreciate, so thank you, Mayor.
All right. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think my microphones are buzzing off, so I hope it's not coming through. But, um, you know, I don't know how many proposed annexations are coming before, uh, staff or map changes or, uh, for mapping, uh, tentative mapping. But, um, again, I, I would like to see this in the master planning process. But until we get there, I, I don't have issue with things remaining as they are with the developer, working with staff. I, I don't think they're gonna come up with anything really unusual or off the wall until, until we can get this master planning stuff done. Um, it, it is becoming quite complicated, so I, you know, I would be willing to relent to that, but I, I really do want to see us, you know, moving towards master planning our community and working, uh, with professionals to get exactly what we want Los, Los Angeles to be. Uh, so needless to say, um, i- if we're the appeal body on this process for street naming in this particular case, uh, I, I don't know why we need to give it to planning commission or, or any other process. Um, maybe we could just leave it as it is until we come up with the new plan and go from there. So I just wanted to put that out there, maybe it'll make it a bit, a bit easier to get through this particular agenda item tonight and, uh, allow staff to work with the developer. I, I don't think we have a whole lot out there that's coming forward. Uh, but we do need to move as quickly as we can on our master planning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and so I think that master planning, that, that idea of rename, commemorative renaming should probably be included in that master plan. Uh, because that's gonna be, that'll be a, a framework that we use to follow. And I know staff has been working on trying to achieve that kind of a framework as we goes with this general plan. We have our update on July twentieth, um, and we talked about various, uh, nice concepts for development and this is a good time to start working that up. So, uh, is, is that clear enough, uh, for, for staff at this point? Ms. Elms?
So I'm, I just want to be clear, um, it seems, because the master plan, which will be a specific plan process, will need to be established in this, in the general plan and will need to, um, carry that forward into probably the zoning code, um, with an ordinance. What I'm hearing from councilmember Lewis is to keep the, at least the local streets, um, in the process that we're doing now, the local residential streets. Um, that's, that's what I'm hearing, but I'm also hearing, um, from, um, from the mayor, um, of going through the city council process and I just want to be clear in, in which, which way, uh, does the council would like, I'd like direction on how to bring that back, if that's, um, what the majority of the council would like to see.
Okay, um, let me, uh, well, it, that's, so essentially the, the questions we have before us are three. One is dealing with street naming now before we have this overall master planned idea. Um, and both potential developments that may be coming to us pretty quick or shortly. The other is the master planning concept, and how we're gonna deal with naming streets and that. And the other is commemorative street name changes, if, if that's something we want to do and they're not necessarily changes, but additions like, I think, uh, Merced has Canal, uh, is now known as Veterans Boulevard. No, M Street, M Street is now known as Veterans, and they have M and Veterans, they just added Veterans to the, to the title. So, um, I think those three, those three issues, um, hmm, I guess it's, well,
And if I may, that's how I-
If, if it's unclear, go ahead, uh, Mr. Breezy, did you want to chime in? I'm, I'm, I'm not able, I'm not able to put this all together very well for us.
Yeah, that's okay, maybe we can go back to the presentation, we can set this aside for a second. Let's get, let's move on to the street naming criteria, because that does seem to be a big part of what your process is. Let's get through the presentation and maybe we'll go back to this as the last segment. Uh, once we have a better understanding of what the bigger picture is of what we're asking for and then we can ask, who do you want to review it? I think, I think what I'm hearing predominantly is bullet point number two, for the time being. Uh, but we can come back to that, so, uh, that would be my suggestion. Move on to the second part of this, this process.
Carry on.
Okay. All right, next slide. All right, so this is where the street naming criteria, um, comes into effect, and this is where, um, staff is suggesting that within this street naming, naming criteria, we would receive direction to outline guidelines and criteria necessary to review street name requests, in addition to that general criteria. So the standard criteria will be the no duplication, it's easily pronounced, um, it is easy spelling, suffixes, name continuity, those would be standard. But we would be getting direction on the following criteria, which would be, uh, street names should recognize natural features related to the city of Los Angeles. So these are some things, some criteria we're asking for consideration on. So this is one component, so, um, natural features, that could be a theme. Whether street names should recognize a person or organization that has made a lasting and significant contribution to the betterment of the city. Require names with the same theme for streets and entire subdivision, that seemed to be a clear, uh, consensus, I think I'm hearing from the council. Um, it may be named in honor of a person who died in the line of service, military, police, or fire, or made significant contributions to the community. Uh, that the person or organization made lasting, and significant contributions to the protection of natural or cultural resources of the city of Los Angeles. That the person or organization had a positive impact on the lives of Los Angeles residents. And then the last criteria could be the person or organization volunteered for ten or more years of service to the community. So these were criteria that kinda differed back and forth from different communities that we thought would be a good starting point, a foundational point to add to our criteria. Um, and we wanted to get feedback from the council if you liked all of them, none of them. Although I do think, you know, just as our conversation has progressed on this particular item, I, I do think you like some um, of these criteria, um, or, or whether you like some and, um, you, you don't care to move forward with others. So, um, with that, I will turn it over, um, back to you, Mayor, to provide direction on just the criteria.
Okay, Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, are you, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, Mayor, so this is where, um, where I get back to saying, you know, staff has a pretty good grip of some of this stuff as far as what's going on, because all this list here was, is all great ideas as far as, uh, criteria for naming streets, so I like it just as it is.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, I like the, the same, uh, here also, the same criteria.
Very good. Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, I have no comment on the criteria.
Okay, and Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Director, for this, uh, I'd like to expand it a little more, um, historical figures from founding, maybe different timelines in our, in our United States, uh, maybe wars, Mexican-American war, War of Independence, uh, et cetera, Spanish-American War, themes from, like that. Uh, maybe, uh, individuals who, uh, won the Congressional Medal of Honor, things like that. Uh, historical events, uh, pivotal points in our history. Uh, inventors, scientists, individuals who made impacts to, you know, the United States as a whole, along with, uh, some of the local, uh, items that are mentioned here. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Um, and I, I agree with every, everyone here and with Mr. Yamas's additions. Um, and I think that would be, I think that's a very nice, uh, criteria. It's a nice set of criteria. So, uh, so I think we're good to go with that, Ms. Elms.
Thank you, thank you for the direction. Uh, next slide, we'll go Uh, this next slide is on commemorative street names. So we wanted to establish a process, it too is very similar to the last slide with the criteria, but we wanted to establish what would, um, what would meet the criteria to have a commemorative street name? But first off, let's start with what is a commemorative street name? It's additions to the street name that would not change the legal street address. This would be for existing street names that would be retained and a supplemental name would be added to the street name signage. Um, so staff is seeking direction on moving forward with, uh, qualifying criteria, what would qualify as commemorative? Uh, I do want to note that we do have a commemorative street name in Los Angeles and, and, uh, Mayor Faria brought up Merced, um, and M Street and, and their commemorative street name. Stockton, um, where Caltrans is located, um, also has a commemorative street name, I think it's Stock, uh, or it's Lane Channel, Channel Street, something like that, I apologize, up in Stockton where Caltrans District Ten is located. Um, and then it is commemoratively, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Um, so there are examples where it does not change the legal street name. The United States Postal Service can still provide mail to the legal street address. Uh, but the street signage provides that commemorative name. And what we have locally is our own Sixth Street. Sixth, Sixth Street, without having a, a, a formal process, an established commemorative street name process is also Main Street. And that was just, I think, the city and possibly the merchants, um, downtown merchants taking it upon themselves to change the name so that it was more identifiable as downtown. Everyone can associate, you know, visitors from out of town can associate, uh, Main Street as being downtown. And so, um, I think historically that's how that name got changed. But, uh, we do have our own commemorative street name, uh, within the city. And, um, with this criteria, um, I would be happy to add, um, some of the items, um, that councilmember Yamas, um, suggested as historical figures from wars and individuals who have made an impact um, within our community or significant historical events, inventor, scientists. I do have some ideas, maybe we can state, um, you know, on, uh, industrial areas, uh, commercial, maybe specific areas, we can use inventors, um, and scientists. Um, I think that would be a great idea and maybe those are some of the ideas staff can bring back as, um, a foundational piece as a part of a policy. Um, and then, um, as we, where we would be carrying forward the criteria of street naming, um, as councilmember Yamas suggested, we would carry that forward to commemorative street names, if, um, the council is okay with that.
Any council, uh, any council member have any, uh, any problem, issue with that? If not, okay, so it looks like we're good to go with that as well.
All right, so the last slide was just asking for, uh, the council to provide direction, but if we can, I think if we could just step back to the process, just to circle back to make sure, um, staff is clear um, on the process and how that would start. Um, or essentially end, basically, it would be, who would approve that street name? What process would that street name go through?
Okay, um, do you, uh, would you like to share where you've, what you, what you've inferred, uh, from the conversation? Or you think we would want to go, or where, where, how it's come across what we want? Uh, what the council wants, I should say, um, or, and then maybe we can, uh, have a conversation further from there if it's, if it's not clear. Um, I know some of the conversation, some of the directions tonight's a little confusing, I think, trying to get it to cohesive is, is our biggest challenge, I think. Um, so, I don't know, Mr. Breezy or Ms. Elms, what you, what you feel, uh, if you have, if you have kind of a, a synopsis of, of what you gleaned tonight? You'd like to share with us, and then we can go from that.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I like the idea of, of having it go through bullet number two in the planning commission for review just temporarily, uh, we can certainly review that process again, but I think it empowers the commission to, to, uh, take on a, perhaps a new and exciting process for them. Uh, we can certainly circle back to the idea of having council, uh, involved in the process and look at how we can accomplish that. But to me, just based on the conversation that we've had tonight, we've had a wide range of different opinions, all very good ones, all very valid ones. Uh, I, it seemed to me like bullet, bullet point number two seemed to be temporarily a satisfactory direction to go in.
Okay, council members, any council member, uh, have any, uh, issue or concern with that? Or is that, uh, is that, uh, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I think it would be good to have the council members restate their position and, and what I had finally agreed on was that since this is gonna be a temporary, um, uh, uh, process, uh, because we are looking forward to, uh, another form of having this done through, uh, uh, through the city. Uh, that, um, you know, I didn't have problems with it remaining at this point with staff and with the developer. Um, but I also would like to make sure that all of the, the, uh, city council understands that, uh, since it's been stated tonight that the council is the appeal board, um, the councils can also, uh, any council member can also bring forward a request for an appeal. It doesn't have to come from the public. And there's a, I think there's X amount of days from the final decision that something has been made that you have to make the appeal. So with that, um, there has to be some involvement somewhere where staff will So with that, um, there has to be some involvement somewhere where staff will let us know that, you know, these street, these, these street names have been named, um, and if any council member has an issue, then they have a right, uh, to call for an appeal. So I, I did not personally, uh, consider option bullet two, um, but I will consider, uh, the third option as a temporary option, uh, until we do otherwise with our master planning in the community. Thank you.
Okay. Well, so maybe the best way to go through it is to bring it all back down to, to the nitty gritty, so to speak. Councilmember Lewis has, uh, said that you're good with option three, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so Mr. Jones, um, well, that's.
Uh, and may I state, Mr. Mayor, that was with, uh, working with the developer.
Working with?
Not, not just coming up with the street names from the department, but currently as we do it in the city, the developer comes up with the names, the economic development department can work with them on that to make sure it's, you know, kind of working cohesively in the area for these maps that apparently are coming forward. Um, but again, I, I'd like to see this as a temporary, uh, stop, a stopgap until we come up with something permanent.
Okay, so for our present operations, uh, Ms. Lewis, uh, likes, uh, options three, um, and working with the developer. Mr. Jones?
I'll let you.
Option three?
O- option three, Mayor.
Okay.
With, with obviously, uh, working with developers. I do think we need a little flexibility just in case a developer, um, has something specific in mind. Say if we got a Costco and they have a special driveway or a special road leading to their parking lot, I'm sure they may want Costco Way. I don't want to lose Costco over a name, so as an example only.
Sure.
We've got to have some flexibility there.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mr. Lambert?
So I, I believe I, I think I went with the third one the last time, too, and I'm, I'm going to stick with that one also with, uh, some of the same reasons.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Yamas?
I think, uh, option two is the most workable. However, if we go with three, I would say that, again, the, the whole process was for us to put an imprint on this, not to have the developer give us these names, uh, because that could be a long back and forth. And I think that it should be the city coming up with these names and these themes. Um, it doesn't make a difference to the developer. I don't believe, I don't know, but I, it does make a difference to the residents and, and will make an impact. So I think that the city should say, these are the names, this is the theme, and not the other way around. Of course, there has to be some flexibility, but, uh, I think, again, we're trying to imprint and we're trying to, uh, make a distinction, uh, in these developments. Thank you.
So Mr. Yamas, uh, prefers, uh, I, uh, option two. Um, and for me, um, my big thing is that council has the final say in themes and names. And so as long as that's the case, and if we have to call it for review, that's fine. As long as that's the case, then I'm good with any of these plans. So it looks like, uh, uh, the majority likes option three. And if we could add those little criteria that we've discussed at length, I think that the fact that we had long, we had extensive and complex discussion, I think helps actually, uh, clear the direction as we move forward, we're, uh, in the process. Because then as every step we take, we can think about what the council want as we go through the various processes. Is that clear enough direction now?
Yes, I appreciate the direction. Thank you.
You're very welcome, and we appreciate all the hard work. You know, it's, it's easy to do things the simple way. Just, you know, kind of, oh, let it, just kind of let it go. It's hard work to do things right. And it's well worth it. When I used to write arrangement, musical arrangements, my mother used to say, no one asked you how long it took you to write it out. They just asked, what did you accomplish? Who did it and what did you accomplish? And so, um, that's a sense of it. If it takes a little longer, a little more work, so be it. But we're going to end up with something good here. And I appreciate it very much. So I'll go ahead and close that item. Close item 12 and move on to item 14, which is the COVID-19 status update. For that, we go to Acting City Manager Breezy. Oh, I think you're on mute, Mr. Breezy.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, council members, there was some discussion previously on, uh, COVID front in regards to our meetings. Two items to discuss tonight. We're still on track to be back in person. Uh, we'll be obviously bringing this back to you again if we need to, but, uh, we'll be back in person on the August 18th meeting at the new council meeting time of 6:00 PM. As the timeline goes, uh, the ordinance takes effect on the 6th. Our declaration, our emergency declaration expires on the 15th of August. And then our first meeting is designed to be back in chambers, um, on the 18th. So that's the direction we're heading in at the moment for, um, bringing our meetings back in person as opposed to being virtual. So there's no questions about that. The second item for tonight is laid out in the staff report. While we were taking a look at our COVID timeline, our, our local council COVID timeline, because COVID is winding down, or at least it seems to be, we took the opportunity to go back and make sure that we had crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. In that re, in that review, uh, we found that two motions that had been made by council back in June of 2020, um, that we wanted you to address tonight or to consider tonight. Those, uh, two motions in June of 2020 were in regards to the mandatory wearing of face coverings in city buildings, the council chambers. And, um, that motion, which was separate from executive orders, it was separate from the emergency declarations, they were made on the side, um, to require the face coverings back then, have still stood the, the process and stood the test of time up until tonight. Tonight, staff is recommending that council resend that, those two June 2020 motions that required the wearing of face coverings to enter City Hall or to go into council chambers or to go into any city building. So that's number, the first part of the process. We'd like you to reconsider resending that previous motion. And then the second part of that motion is to direct staff to implement and continue to follow state guidelines regarding COVID-19 safety rules in city buildings and, uh, in the workplace. Through approval of this item, the city will be in line with current state rules regarding the wear of face coverings. And in the coming days, if it's approved, we'll begin the next phase of the process, which is required by the state, which will have to do with some of those flyers that we sent out the other day, just to start to warm everyone up to the idea of the change, um, that it has to do with the attestations and the CalOSHA requirements. And we'll start that process if it is approved tonight. So again, I'll go back real quickly. We had the two motions back in June of 2020 that required the face mask, face coverings be worn in all city buildings. Tonight, our request is that you resend that motion and, uh, basically follow state guidelines so that we can continue on with the progression of getting back to normal. That's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. It's discussion, um, and, uh, and direction, so, uh, we'll go ahead and look for raised hands for discussion on the item. Any questions or comments from council? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, I, I was hoping that our city manager was going to go over the guidelines, uh, in the report. And I, and I would assume these new guidelines are based on OSHA, uh, of what they are requiring so that it is clear to us and that we, that we have an understanding, or at least that I have an understanding of what the requirement is. Because I, um, there's some caveats in here, uh, in regards to whether you can or cannot wear a face mask and whether or not, uh, you have to or, or don't have to, uh, do an estet, I can't get that word out of my mouth, uh, to attest on, in writing, um, what your status is as far as the vaccinations is concerned. So are, are you able to expand a little bit on that to help us out, to understand that?
100%. I tried to keep it, uh, as quick as I could for, uh, you. It goes back to June 17th when CalOSHA came forward with their revised emergency and temporary standards. And, um, there's a couple of different things. It's, the big distinction is between vaccinated and non-vaccinated employees now. Uh, the requirement is that, as much as I thought, I think a lot of us thought that when they changed the rules, that it was take your mask off, everything's fine. But it wasn't as simple as that. CalOSHA requires still that, uh, there are three different ways that you can, um, uh, attest to being vaccinated, and that is having the employee require actual proof of vaccination, a vaccine, vaccine card, um, that an employer maintains a copy of. They, um, could also maintain a record of, uh, but maintain a record of the proof of vaccination through a self attestation form, which basically is the honor system for the employees, uh, to complete a form that the city is developing in conjunction with, uh, Lieber Cassidy and Whitmore to follow the CalOSHA rules. And that basically we will send out to all of our employees if this motion passes tonight to resend that, that June of 2020 requirement. Um, we'll start working on sending those out in the coming days with a full explanation of what the process is. Uh, but this is in regards to, this, this process is in regards to employers and employees in the workplace, not necessarily for individuals in and about, um, the public areas or private areas. This is just for employees and employers to deal with the new changes in the CalOSHA law. So unvaccinated employees, those who refuse or fail to sign the attestation form will be considered by CalOSHA rules to have not been vaccinated. And the requirement is that they will still need to be, uh, required to wear, uh, a face covering in the workplace. Those who have, uh, attest to the fact that they have been vaccinated with their proof of, I think it's the type of vaccination, whether it's Johnson &amp; Johnson or Moderna, and having at least the date be 14 days prior to, um, the attestation to be fully vaccinated, those individuals will not have to wear, uh, face coverings inside the workplace. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, um, my other question is, is if, uh, um, a council member or an employee does not want to sign an attestation form, they'll be required to wear a mask. But, you know, for me, I'm concerned because we do have HEPA laws that protect people and their, uh, medical information. So once this form is signed, who gets that information? I mean, are, are, is the city going to be required to distribute it out to the state or somebody else? Because, you know, I, I didn't see any of that in the report. And I don't really know, uh, what the HEPA law is stating, because I, I haven't gone to look it up to try to figure out, you know, if they're going to change their mind down the road and require that, uh, you know, this information be dispersed out to whoever wants it.
Yeah, no, we won't be distributing that information to anyone without your approval. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Lambert?
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for, if I'm understanding this though, but before we could actually start moving towards the normalcy, following the OSHA guidelines, we actually need to resend this motion from last year, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Uh, totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones? You're on mute, Mr. Jones?
So, so basically CalOSHA is saying, if you're vaccinated, there's no way that you're going to spread COVID. I mean, look at what we happened last year with city staff. Everybody was wearing masks and we still had some outbreaks within PD and even at City Hall. Multiple people got COVID. So I, I don't know what any of this is really going to do. I mean, it's like putting Band-Aids on, on things that just will not fix the problem here. So it's just, it's something where government's not going to be able to, to make this seem bulletproof. So, you know, with the vacs, vaccines, people that have it, they're not saying that, hey, you're, you're guaranteed not to get COVID. They're just saying you're not going to get it, get it as bad if you do get it. So you can still spread it. So I don't know why they wouldn't be required to wear a mask anymore. I'm not in favor of the mask. Uh, I think everybody needs to take their own, uh, assess their own risks and, and be responsible with that. And whatever kind of bubble suit they want to wear is more than fine by me. But, uh, yeah, this is just out of control. So, and it's been for the longest time. So I'm all for rescinding the city's, uh, ordinance on it and just leaving it as, as it is because obviously the state's going to do what they're going to do regardless of what we like here in Los Banas. So that's where I stand on it as far as that, as this patient. I'd be surprised to see how many of you guys get back in. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I, I see hands up still or are they, have they gone? Ms. Lewis, is your hand still up? Bring your hand up again. Nope? Okay. So, uh, what's this going to say? So essentially, let's get down to what this will mean for city council. Our city council meeting, if it were to take place, of course, things may change between now and the second meeting of August. If it were to take place, if we resend this ordinance, uh, and we, we move forward here, our next city council, our city council meeting, our first one in person in August, then anyone, anyone not vaccinated would be required to wear a mask in the chamber? Is that what this law would require? And, and then anyone who is vaccinated would be, would not be required to wear the mask? Is that correct?
Yes. Through our protocol, our city protocol and the, um, policy that we've set forth, which has that self attestation, that honor system path, yes, those who attest that they've been vaccinated, meeting the requirement of the, or the definition of a fully vaccinated person in our protocol, yes, they would not need to have to wear a mask.
Okay. So we need a motion here. And the motion is to reconsider the mask man, is to resend, um, and maybe Mr. Breezy or Mr. Vaughn could, uh, chime in exactly how we should phrase this motion.
Go ahead, Bill. I'll take a stab at it, but you better.
Uh, if you look at your staff report on, uh, the very first page, there's a one and two. And so the first action would be to resend the June 17th, 2020 motion requiring face coverings.
Okay.
Be as simple as that.
All right. So shall I entertain a motion to resend the June 17th, 2020? Or, uh, resolution to?
Motion. It was a motion.
Motion. It was a motion to, uh, to require masks in city, in city buildings.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to resend the June 17th, 2020 motion requiring face coverings in Los Banas.
Well, it's in city, city buildings and, and the city council chambers.
City buildings and city council chambers.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. He's been waiting all year to make that motion.
I have.
Um, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I have, Mr. Yamas?
I'd like to second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and second by Councilmember Yamas to resend the June 17th, 2020 mask order. Ms. Blevins, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
So the, the second motion would be to direct staff to take the necessary.
So the, the second motion would be to direct staff to take the necessary steps to implement. Uh, specifically, it's, it's really the Cal OSHA rules in the workplace and to follow any other state, state of California rules in terms of city buildings, not involving employees. So um it's just simply stated on there, on the staff report to direct staff to take steps to implement and to continue to follow state guidelines reg- regarding COVID nineteen.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
If we choose not to take steps or make a motion for it, do those state laws not apply to us anymore?
No, they, they certainly apply. Um,
I'm just wondering why we have to make a motion for it if they automatically supersede anything that we want?
Because there's different ways to implement them and staff would like direction to go ahead and implement those.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to take steps to implement and to continue to follow state guidelines rego- regarding COVID nineteen safety rules in city buildings and venues and in the workplace.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas, sir. I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas uh, to uh, direct staff to implement the Cal OSHA and state rules regarding COVID nineteen protocols. Ms. Blevins, roll call.
Jones?
No.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia.
Yes. Uh, motion carried. Uh, Councilmember Jones dissenting. Four to one. We will now move to the advisement of public notices. And this week, this meeting, there is no report. Next city manager report, Acting City Manager Breezy.
Mr. Mayor, only one uh, reminder that uh, the August fourth, August fourth council meeting, staff is still intending on canceling the meeting for one last summer uh, break with family and friends. And we're planning accordingly to keep the business running in the meantime. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we'll look for, a councilman, we'll see an item on the next agenda regarding that cancellation. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Breezy. Now, next is uh, report update for Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V Committee. Um, MCAG, once again, remind everyone, we are working on that synchronization of the, of the lights on Chaco Boulevard. They're also uh, looking to build uh, put in a signal, a full, full-fledged uh traffic control signal at Eleventh Street and Chaco Boulevard. And that's in coordination, conjunction with MCAG, Caltrans, Merced County, Los Banas, uh, City of Los Banas, all of us are partners on these things. And so they're really working hard to to improve the flow of traffic through Chaco Boulevard. On Peninsula Clean Energy, um, the July regular board meeting has been canceled. It normally had occurred on July twenty second. And it has been canceled. And for as far as the Measure V committee, I have no report, no new information to report from there. So we'll move to item eighteen, city council member reports. We start with Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I do wanna thank Mr. Nicholson from LaFco for his presentation and Stacy for their presentations also. Well job. Uh, also, I wanna uh, say uh, thank you to the Downtown Association uh, for successfully putting on uh, the event and the fireworks uh, from this previous weekend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to um, let the council and the community know that I attended uh, well, actually, it was a demonstration uh, put on by um uh, Nessie Farm League um, out of Madera, out of North Fresno, I'm sorry. Uh, out in the fields i- at a farm in um hold on a second, I hit something here. Out on a farm in um in, in Fresno County where a vineyard, a, a grape vineyard of over, it was in Fireball, actually. A grape vineyard of over twenty-one years uh, that had become non-productive. Um, and as I had shared with council and the community, in the, starting January first, two thousand twenty-five, um, there'll be no more burning of uh, cuttings from trees and grapevines and burning in your um, burning wood in your fireplace. So uh, they put on a demonstration for the board members to come out and see how this was going to work and operate. And um, this massive equipment out there that just does a wonderful job, um uh, they cut down some, the grapevines and pulled the, the uh, wires out. And they would pick up the, the cuttings and put them on this conveyor belt. And the cuttings went through and when it came out at the other end, it was pure mulch uh, for the farmers to use to either incorporate back into the ground so that they can uh, it uh, minimize the watering for their, their crops, or it could be hauled away. And then there was another piece of machinery that uh, there was probably about three feet left of the, the grapevine from the ground up. And this other machinery went on top of that and just went twelve inches into the ground and cut up the grapevines and you, you would never know that there was anything ever on that ground that had been planted there. Um, the equipment is extremely expensive, uh, starting at six hundred thousand up to uh, a million two hundred thousand for one piece of equipment to do this. Uh, and the average cost for clearing one acre could be nineteen thousand dollars. So the cost uh, to the farming community is very expensive to do this. Uh, but it's become state law now and um uh, it kinda is what it is, but it was exciting uh, to see how this equipment is working and how the farmers are gonna be able to minimize uh, by not burning crop anymore and causing um, the pollution as it seemed to go into the air and have cleaner uh, process of clearing their crop out on an annual basis. So uh, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor, to, to give that report and um, and, you know, I really appreciate um, the farmers and them accommodating uh, the requests of people in, in the community and the environment. Uh, and that there's a collaboration of working together to try to solve some of the issues here in our valley as far as dust and smoke is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Yamas?
I just uh, wanna say, yeah, it was a great uh, July third event. Thank you to all concerned. All participated. Um, we had police and fire out there. They did a tremendous job uh, providing that uh, force of presence to ensure that uh, we enjoyed ourselves and provided uh, the safety uh, network. Um, having said that, you know, uh, there was a little, there was an incident here in our neighborhood. Um, just remind folks to, if you see something, say something, call it in. Um, unfortunately, I think the, the, the fireworks that people were laying out was kinda used as a mask to, to that incident. Uh, somebody was uh, killed here. Again, look out for each other. You see something, say something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor. Um, a couple of questions here. Item thirteen um, was pulled off the agenda tonight. Is there a simple uh, explanation on why the item was pulled off or will this come back for another meeting?
Um, the item was Ms. Lewis's item. And so I will ask her to respond to that, because she's the one that asked it to be pulled.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did request the pull. Uh, I'm doing some research on it uh, through other communities to see how they're handling um uh, their ec- their economic development, uh, even whether they have economic development committees. So um, once I finish my research, I will report back to the council on what, what my findings are. And while I still have the mic, uh, I also will make comment on the uh, third of July event. Uh, and for the time that I was there, it went, it went successful. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
Yeah, um, next item, I received uh, several complaints from uh, some residents regarding the um, new trash cans that are being put out this week. Uh, some were saying they look a little small versus what the contract states. Just gonna see if we can have staff perform a quick internal audit just to see if the contractual size, the true volume of the cans that are being used. And then I'd like the findings brought forward for public disclosure so we can get that figured out and hopefully put that rumor to rest. Um, also, I would like to comment on this Saturday's uh, past event from the Los Banas Downtown uh, Association. Um, it was a huge success. Um, it was a hot day, but once it got a little cooler in the evenings, the crowds started packing in. I wanna thank everybody that helped make that uh, event possible. Um, Mayor, I don't know if you were at the plaza in the evening to watch the fireworks, but um the appreciation that was received from the community for this event was just amazing. Um, and I feel like the organization that put it on is uh, worthy of a, a pro- proclamation to mark that event. Um, would you uh, agree, Mayor? And do you think we can make this happen for, for that association that made that event possible?
If you would like a proclamation, I would be glad to prepare to request one.
I, I would love one, Mayor, for that organization. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that is all.
All right. Uh, and so congratulations to the event and had some fireworks and had some people and we had a flag raising. It was a nice gathering. And thank everyone involved for putting that on. Now, we are going to move to our closed session. Uh, but before we do, Cheryl entertained a motion to adjourn to four P M, Tuesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-one to hold a workshop regarding the general plan update, boundary map, and agricultural land preservation policies, which will be held virtually. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, some moves.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Jones, to adjourn to four P M, Tuesday, July twentieth, as read. Roll call, Ms. Blevins.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. We will now move to closed session. Item A will be conference of labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. Agency-designated representatives, Acting City Manager Breezy. Normal pay. City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Two-Fold Employee Organizations, Los Banas Police Officers Association, Los Banas Police SARS Association, Los Banas Firefighters Association, Los Banas Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, L B P D C S O A, Los Banas Public Employees Union, Public Works, Local One, slash A F S C N E, and unrepresented miscellaneous employees. Item B, Conference of Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Four of Subdivision B of Government Code Section five four nine five six point one, One Potential Case. And item C, Public Employment City Manager Recruitment Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. And so we will now adjourn the regular meeting and go into closed session. And we will go ahead and lock the meeting. Take a few minutes here to go ahead and lock the meeting. Thank you.